Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Mike, would you please ...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Senate agenda minutes, October 24, 2013, no pay bills, payroll?
Make a motion.
Senate agenda is read.
May the second, any discussion?
None.
All favor.
Aye.
Vote. Interested citizens? Right, recognition?
A few recognitions this evening. First one deals with the wellness committee or conference, or both more correctly. We had our first grade seven, eight wellness day last week, and I'd like to formally thank Mrs. Branch and Mrs. Perry, along with the wellness committee, for making this day possible. Some great topics for our students to take advantage of. We had sleep in adolescents, daily fitness, self-defense training, cyberbullying, nutritional eating, befriending your stress, brain injuries, rest and recharge. Those are just some of the topics that our students were involved with during that day. Very well done. I took it in and was very impressed with the day as it unfolded. So, thank you again. We have Mrs. Branch here this evening.
And I've heard excellent feedback from folks that attended it, or their feedback from the kids also. I think it was very well received.
Great. I especially like the bile dots.
Yes.
Daryl can attest to that.
It wasn't black.
It wasn't black when you're sitting beside me.
Superintendent, skip breakfast for that.
I did. Next acknowledgement, we've had an outstanding fall athletic season. Our football team has a game this Friday night, district final. We're looking forward to seeing that. Hopefully, the weather will warm up a little bit, but we're pretty hardy. We can handle a little bit of cold weather. Should be an exciting game. I'd encourage everybody to take part in the event. Our field hockey team made it to our district finals. They had a fantastic season, very strong, a great team to watch. Our cheerleaders placed second in the league, so again, very incredible opportunity for us as a school district, and lots of parent support, and certainly did us proud as we finished the season off. Golf, I'm not sure whether that's still going on or not.
They're all done. They made it to the state championship tournament as a team, which I believe is the first time in history that's ever happened.
Excellent.
They've had golfers qualify for states as individuals in the past, but this year they made it as a team. They were undefeated league champions, so they had a tremendous year.
Excellent. Good to hear. So, a real great opportunity for us to celebrate our successes. On another note, middle school, high school term progress reports are going out, so parents and students all have an opportunity to see where they stand at this point in time midway through the term. Last acknowledgement, I'd like to acknowledge our technology staff, our teachers and administrators, for working together and rolling out our parent portal access system to our student data system. We're actually sending letters out as we speak, and parents will be receiving passwords so they can log in and see their individual students' progress. So, timely since our quarter term is coming out. Sometimes we make this sound easy, and most systems, when they do this, they'll experiment with one particular class to roll it out at first, but we felt a little risky, and as a result, we opened it up for everybody right off the bat. So, we've had a lot of people scouring our data to make sure that everything coincides with the appropriate student name, and we're excited to actually witness people logging into our U.S.I.S. system. So, thanks again. That finishes my acknowledgements for this evening.
Ready for presentation?
Yes, this evening, we have part of our technology staff with us today. They're going to talk about Chromebook integration. Chromebooks have become very popular over the past couple of years. As a district, we've been experimenting with them, and I've been very pleased with the results that we've seen. They are also going to talk about our Aspen parent portal system. So, I'd like to welcome Mike McKeckern.
Great, thanks. So, tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Chromebooks, and I know PJ was over at the middle school last month, and he was able to see them in action, so he thought it would be a good idea for us to share with the school committee and the rest of the community a little bit about what they are, how they work, and how we use them. So, to start, I'm going to show two quick, two-minute videos, which kind of explain what Chromebooks are. This could do a lot better than I could, so if we can just watch that.
Introducing Chromebooks for Education. A simple way to bring the power of the web into the classroom, manage school-wide sets of hardware, and keep students focused. For instance, Chromebooks need more time for teaching by booting up in just eight seconds. That's less time than it takes to make a paper airplane. Even after entering sleep mode, they resume working immediately. And unlike most notebook computers, Chromebooks have a battery that lasts up to eight hours, so even at the end of a long school day, they're still going strong. Built-in Wi-Fi and optional 3G allow Chromebooks to connect to the web anytime, anywhere. Chromebooks are also built around a web browser, which means everything is stored online. Students and teachers can simply log on to any machine to access their emails, documents, and personal settings, so there are no more excuses for missing or incomplete homework. Without the need for constant software updates and yearly reimaging, Chromebooks make it easy to provide each student with their own computer. Schools can manage an entire fleet of Chromebooks with just a few clicks. Administrators can configure and manage computers and user accounts via a web-based console. They can also control which web apps and extensions users can add. Chromebooks stay up-to-date with the latest features and fixes, so IT managers can spend less time updating hardware and more time focusing on the important things. Integrated security provides multiple layers of protection that defends computers and the entire network from malware and viruses. The Chromebooks for Education program includes everything from the computers and operating system to updates, web-based management, and extended warranty and support from Google. At the end of the day, Chromebooks for Education enables schools to be more efficient in terms of classroom time, IT resources, and technology budgets, which ultimately leads to happier teachers, students, and parents. To find out more about getting Chromebooks for your school, visit google.com/chromebook/education.
Great. That one is from the technology side of things. This one is more from the teacher educator side.
The more I could connect with the students, the better experience they would have in my classroom in terms of learning. I could do even more with Google Forms. I could ask them, "What's one thing that you would like me to know about you?" We've been able to take a step through that wall and break that barrier.
Ms. Niasse is a really great teacher. She's always there to help you.
Ms. Niasse.
Yes, Jessica.
I had to have some surgery. My first thought was, "I'm not going to be here for the weekend, so if they had a question, I would be here to answer." And then I'd go to a conclusion on how to fix this.
Good morning, ladies. How are you guys doing?
Interaction and the rapport that I build with teachers, that's what gives me my passion. That's what makes me.
Calm down. All of them fell fast. Probably was a problem.
It would take him an hour to walk on his knees.
The Chromebook is stretching reminded in his head. He understands.
I'm a superhero, so I am a superhero all myself.
If I need some help, I'm here. I'm trying to move.
No, it's time.
Basically, and see if I can get this to boot up in eight seconds, it is an operating system that is basically just a browser, a Chrome browser, and which works great and works in accord with our Google Apps for Education, which every student in grades four through 12 in our district have. Some of the services that we use are for the older grades. We have Gmail calendars, personal calendars. We have, we use Drive, which is the Microsoft Office alternative, which includes documents, presentations, spreadsheets, and forms. We have the ability to work on websites and Blogger, which many of the teachers use for their class website. And along with that, it has the usual Google Apps, Maps, and YouTube, and Google Plus, and Photos. The cool things, some cool things about the Chromebook, as the movie said, battery lasts all day, so we can charge them overnight. Kids can grab them throughout the day out of the cart, and we can go whole day with usage without having to recharge them. The students, when they pick them up, they're, they log in, they're to the Littleton PS domain, and they have all their own documents, programs right in front of them, do their work, log out, they can go home, and log into their account there and see the exact same thing. They're not tied to one device. Everything is kept on the cloud. This will help us in the ability to go paperless, because the students can work right on the Chromebook. When they're done, there's no need to print things out. They can just share their work with the teacher. The teacher then can look at it online, make comments, can work with them live collaboratively as they're working. It's also, which would help, being a money saver, because Google Apps for Education is a free product that we use. The Chromebooks are cost about $279 with the management tool, and there's no need for us to purchase Microsoft Office licenses or antivirus licenses, so it saves us money there. Biggest thing, though, I think, as we're moving forward, is that this is a perfect solution for our PARK initiative, where we are doing the online testing, and this device does qualify for PARK. And it gives me the ability to manage all the devices in district from one spot quickly, lock down the pieces on the device, like the camera or Bluetooth, that we need to lock down to take the test, and then we can go back after that very easily. How are they being used in our district? At Russell Street, when I was over at Russell Street, I've seen them working on documents and presentations. I've seen the students working in collaboration, multiple students working on one document from two or three different Chromebooks. And it's really cool. We've done, we've done this demonstration before, that seeing all three people working on one document at the same time. I've seen middle school students using this for VHS. They'd rather grab one of these for VHS than sit at one of our computer lab tables. They pull a Chromebook out of the cart, go find a beanbag chair, open it up, and they get to work. They prefer that over sitting and working at the computer lab. At our high school, I know guidance is using it for their novants in their college, their college things. Our language department has a bunch of them, using them for recording conversations in the language that they're learning, sharing, and sharing that with the teachers. And I know also our social studies department is also using them. So, that's pretty much it. Any questions, or you want to?
Yeah, just regarding the licenses for software that we now no longer have to pay for, because we're transitioning to this browser-based system that already has everything we need, how much money, you know, would that normally cost us every year, give or take?
If, well, Microsoft, if we purchased a Microsoft Office Education 2010, it's $50 a person.
Per device.
Yeah, per device.
So, it's, so the cost of a Chromebook is $260, $270, you said?
$279, so right there.
And you can just subtract, you know, $60 from that.
Antivirus, it could be $10 a device, so it's saved money there.
So, it's great. Saves us a lot of money on the things we would need.
We have the ability also to edit photographs, edit video, edit sound, which where in the past we've purchased Adobe Photoshop. We can just do that right on the Chromebook.
Now, for some of the new MacBook lab I know at the high school has been used traditionally for photography, digital imagery. Will those systems still have the existing Photoshop program?
Yes, yeah, we will still have labs, and there will always be need for labs. We run SolidWorks at the high school, and we do need some heavy-duty computers to run that. And we do have the Mac lab, the media lab, which runs, does have the Adobe capability for video editing at a larger scale. This is more for a smaller scale or everyday use in the classroom.
So, the Chromebook meets the daily needs of the students?
Yes.
And when there's a greater need, there are existing devices that they can use?
Yes, yeah, we'll always have labs.
Great. Great, thank you.
How many, how many do we currently have in the district?
A little over 100.
Okay. And are we leveled off for the time being, or are we contemplating acquiring more? Or is that dependent on ...
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're in the discussion. We would love, it's such in-demand. I had three teachers call me last week because they are putting in LEF grants. They want Chromebooks.
Have you contemplated what would be the cap? Like, how many would be the ideal number to have, or are we still not ... Well, we're still in the infancy stages. I sent out a memo to you this afternoon, and that gives you an indication of where we need to boot at this point in time. That definitely isn't a cap, that's just a minimum requirement as we go into PARK. And then two other questions. So, if I had a device at home, a Chromebook, I can bring it in instantly be integrated, or would there be, I mean, would IT have to get that, like, on the list of devices that you can then tweak if you need to in terms of, you know?
Yeah, our Chromebooks, I purchased with a management tool, and they join up to our Littleton PS domain, and that allows me to manage these Chromebooks. I could ...
So, even the one that came as a BYOD type of thing? Could somebody ...
If we wanted to do that, we could, yes.
And then my last question is, I know a couple of years ago, we had the iPad cards type thing. Have we, have we switched technologies?
No, those work, those are still working, and they work great for the K-2.
Okay.
And that's where most of them are.
And then are we confident that this, that any, you know, if we make an effort towards the Chromebook, that we're going to be okay technology-wise in terms of not being, facing an obsolescence issue in the next two to five years? I mean, I have an opinion about that, but I'll ...
Yeah, well, that's a beauty. It's not, there's not an operating system, so we're not having to upgrade from XP to Windows 7. It's a browser, and which automatically, as the browsers get newer and updated, it's automatically updated. I mean, you will get to a point, yeah, usage of these Chromebooks could, you know, after a few years, we'll see how they last, how they wear out.
I'm not more worried about the device. I'm just talking about the overall, that this is a good IT strategy to pursue going down the road, that it's going to be a viable strategy for long enough to make it worthwhile to, you know, go through the capital acquisition and that type of thing.
It is, it is, yeah. Especially with us using the Google Apps for Education. That's to partner perfectly, and that's ...
The only point of clarification I want to make is, we often use acronyms, and some folks don't always know what we're talking about. We use acronyms, so just for everybody, if you don't know what PARK means, it's partnership for assessment of ...
Readiness.
Readiness, I'm sorry.
College and career.
College and career. And career. So, we throw them around all the time, so it's not like we're playing in the park. It's ...
And that's an online assessment that's coming down the road.
We're going to talk more about that later, but I'm just going to throw those on the line.
No, I think this sounds like a very, you know, sort of cost-efficient means also for us to equip quite a few students with interactive devices during the day there. I think the one observation I've made, though, they're not, you know, they're not the total device replacement, as my own children are discovering the benefits of having a dual monitor set up on my computer. You can't always get all your information focused on that one little tiny screen there, so, you know.
It's a tool.
It's a tool.
It's for taking, yeah, taking notes in class.
Research.
Using it, yeah, research, using it day-to-day.
Can the textbooks go on there?
That's the intent. As soon as the companies catch up to the demand, they would be web-based electronic textbooks.
There is a Google App Store, which has a piece with, an education piece to it, where you can purchase books or apps that align with the common core.
How many iPads do we have in the district?
Four, at least four carts of 30.
120 to 140.
120, 130, 140, something like that.
So, parents, you know, and younger and younger, the children, you know, the parents of mine, the children, iPads, thin pads, Chromebooks, whatever, may not be within our purview, and I'm not going to ask you to do this tonight, so make no recommendation. But maybe down the road, it may be worthwhile for an education perspective, as to what our experience is, and certainly articulate it well, so it doesn't look like we're trying to, you know, push a particular product, but what may serve the children best if a parent's going to choose between one or the other, or one out of three, or whatever devices they may be looking at.
And that's why, like, the iPads at the younger age with the touch and the icon view works great, and as we get older, people tend to need the keyboard to type and the transition to it.
That's super, thanks.
And the pendulum swings back. The pendulum swings back, we need pictures again.
Yeah.
It pitches it right at the cuttings. Natalie, you want to say anything?
I think it's important to note, too, a lot of the, like, the spreadsheets that you can create, if you're used to Excel, you can pick this up super, super quick. Google Docs looks a lot like Word. The PowerPoint presentation, the Google presentation, looks a lot like PowerPoint. So, it's a nice parody. There isn't much difference, so if you're used to using Excel and starting the formula with an equal sign, it's going to start the same way, it's going to format the same way. So, I think that's why the kids have really caught on so fast, and it's nice to be able to not have the excuse of, "My dog ate my homework." It's on your drive. Let's go log in, and let's go get it. Quick and easy, and it's done.
I'm toast on that one now.
There goes that excuse.
And Google Docs has actually come along way in the last six months in terms of compatibility with other programs that we've been using for word processing, so the changes are good, and we're, we're right where we need to be at this point in time in terms of exploration of integrated technology.
We even used forms to create a survey after the wellness event that the kids are going to complete, because it was so easy. Survey Monkey has just gone out of my vision at this point, because it was so simple, and then all the responses get put into a spreadsheet, tabulated, done. Love it. It was great.
Anybody else, anything else? Mike, Natalie, thanks very much. Appreciate you coming on tonight, telling us about this. I know you're both very excited about it, and I said how excited you've been about it, too.
Sorry.
No, no, no. Enthusiast. That'd be great.
Because we all know it's infectious for the children, too, so, thank you.
Natalie's going to come up and drive us through the portal.
Okay, oh, great.
Drive through the portal?
Yeah.
Perfect. So, what you're seeing on the screen right now is the portal screen. It's how all of our teachers log in, it's how we log in, it's how the parents are going to log in, it's going, how the students log in. It's all from the same main place. So, as we log in, and we're going to be using my family's login. Now, a teacher's going to have a very different view than a staff member, than a system admin, than a parent, than a student. Parent and student look very much the same. So, as you look ... So as you're looking at the portal, you have four top tabs. You've got your pages, which will show you Emily's assignments on the left, a calendar on the right, and as we scroll down the page just a little bit, published reports, which is on the right. So that will have your progress report and your report card. It will come up as a PDF. You can download it and save it, you can view it, you can print it, it will be up there as long as the principals decide that, that PDF will show up. So we'll probably have the progress reports and then when the grades come out, we'll do a report card. On the left-hand side, it will show any overdue assignments, any assignments due today, due tomorrow, and then as you look at the family top tab.
May I click there?
Yep, go ahead. Thank you very much. So this will show Emily, her date of birth, her grade, her school name. So if you can click on her name or on the details, it doesn't matter. Yep. Perfect. It'll show the basic information, her local ID, her state ID, her date of birth, what school she's at, what her YOG is in Aspen terms, it's year of graduation. They love to use acronyms, they're a lot of fun at Aspen. I've gone down four times and I think I know every tech support person right now. So her grade level, her enrollment status and her homeroom. So the family and the student would be able to see that. There's an address tab up there, Mike, right to the right of demographics.
Got it.
Perfect, that'll show her address and they break it up as address line one, two and three. Line one is your street address, line two would be the PO box, line three is your city, state zip. Then the next tab over, I'm not sure if there's anything on there, Mike, ethnicity? Basic ethnicity and then a photo, she's going to love me right now. Sorry.
You're going to over big.
I over big. So then the next section down is her contacts. So you have, you can have up to 10 contacts, you can have 20, some students will only have four. The most important one is the emergency priority one. That is who will have portal access. We designated everyone with a number one to have the access and we designated that through the district view. So we have four there. It'll show the home number, cell phone number, relationship address, and then the next section down. Yep. Perfect. Any dismissals, tardies, absences, she's a very well attended student, she hasn't missed any school yet this year. And then the last section down.
Is there schedule?
Nothing there, yeah. That's just your schedule. So if you wanted to know what class your student was at a particular point of time because you wanted to drop off their lunch, their homework, you know exactly where they are at all times. Okay? See the bell up there? No, that's not going to work right now, but if you clicked on the bell, it'll tell you exactly where she is at that point in time during the school day. That's called the schedule bell or your quick status bell. So let's go to the academics tab. So your academics tab will show you exactly what classes your student has by description, course, who the teacher is, and then you can drill down into a specific class, not advisory because we won't get anything. And that will show you her attendance summary and the average summary for each of the categories that she has for that particular class. To go to the next class on the top right, you've got arrows next to the magnifying glass, that will take you to the next class. You can just keep scrolling through as long as you want to all of her classes to see exactly what her average is, her running total, and her attendance summaries for that class. If you wanted to drill down further, you could go to the assignments. Yep. Perfect. So that will tell you what the assignment name was, what their score was, what the total points were. Anything, just that last section?
That's just the classroom attendance.
Yeah. And then if you did classroom attendance at the high school, we do classroom attendance, the middle school we don't, we do a daily attendance, that would drill down even further. What do you think? It's awesome, isn't it? I've been in Aspen for a year and I'm very excited about it. Any questions?
Good question, well, it's to the staff.
Yes.
Staff would be populating any assignments or anything, so the parents can go in there and see what the assignment is when. Child X comes home and says, I'm not going to bang one of my children. Oh, we don't have any homework tonight. We can go on this, we can see what there is for homework.
We're, we're encouraging our, our, our staff to use the program to its fullest potential. We're not mandating at this point in time.
How many teachers are on so far? How many classrooms?
Are using Aspen?
Grade six to 12.
Give or take.
Yeah.
All of them.
All of them. All of them are using it for attendance. As far as grading purposes, it's the middle school and the high school. Now, when Russell Street and Shaker Lane, they each have different reporting card features and it's a lot of legwork to slump that in. So I know that there was talk of going to standards based at some point, so rather than reinvent the wheel twice, we're waiting until everything is standardized into the point that they like.
In those abilities.
Right. Before we start putting any type of grading in there.
And how many of the classrooms at the middle school and the high school have the homework factored into this program so the students can go on and see what assignments they have?
Right. Most of them are putting the information in as far as students and parents being able to log in and things. This is going to be the first foray into it in the next week. This will be the first time that they see it. So the more that they use it, the more excited they'll get about it and it's, it's full transparency. It's nice to be able to go up there and see. I know the seventh grade group really likes to show everything up there and that works for them.
Great.
Yeah. We've done a lot of training with the high school and the middle school teachers and Russell Street and Shaker Lane and they're really all on board and having fun for the most part.
There'll be a bit of a learning curve as we, we go through this year. Uh, I think what you'll notice as, as the year progresses, you'll find more information in various fields.
Yes. There's much more we can customize with what you see in the view. We can add more, we can add to, but really the sky's the limit as far as what we can do. So we're starting simple, we're starting small, and then we can expand upon it and say, look what we've added today. So it'll be good.
Natalie, you'd mentioned Excel early as an example.
Yes.
So if a teacher is keeping grades in Excel, does it export easily to this or is everything scored right in here? So I take tests and I get my standard 65 or so? That's out of 65. And, you know, teachers just go to paper and types right in or whatever the technique may be, but then it's all right in here and does all the math.
Oh, yeah, and there's four different calculations, about four different calculation methods, total points, there's weighted points, weighted categories. We went through it ad nauseam as far as which method would work. As far as importing it from an Excel spreadsheet into this, we're not doing that as of this point, we're having them do the grading right in here.
So there'd be no need to use the spreadsheet.
Not at all, not at all. Works very well.
Thanks.
A one-stop service, that's what we were looking for when we, we purchased the program.
Puts it across this.
Oh, man. Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
A less than a year recall. Is there annuals fee with that or?
Yeah, there's an annual fee. The annual fee is around, yeah, around 18,000, I don't remember the exact number. It's comparable to what we're paying for Reddiker.
Okay.
And Reddiker was not browser based?
So basically it's a break, more or less a break.
It's a break even on the annual.
You feel that you're getting a lot more of the.
Absolutely.
The functionality is, is tenfold.
And what's Aspen's track record in terms of like, what's their, their client base? I mean, there are a lot of public school systems that are using this, like, what's their market share? Are they like one of the leaders out there?
Well over 100 in the state.
They have a third of their, a third of the districts in Massachusetts.
They're owned by Follett, which is our, our library software is run on and they're very, they're a large company nationwide.
We went to an Aspen Institute last spring and all the districts were there that use Aspen, it was huge, how many people were there. And they're wonderful.
Even though, as you say, some of our program, more functionality, still there's a cost associated with it and encouraging that maximum usage you're doing. Thank you.
Well, we'll save money also, we're rolling our nursing software, which costs us about $3,500 a year into this, so that costs go away also.
Well done.
And we're looking at all the ways to use more of the features as well.
I'm, I know for sure, but I just want to reiterate that there'll be outreach to the parents because to me, the best way to get the staff to really want to get involved in this is if they're getting pushed by the students and the parents, you know, that'll be the driver, it won't be management or anybody else, you know, kind of cajoling them into it, it'll be that kind. So the more community involvement we can get, which I think will be.
Our parents are dying.
Yeah, I mean, I know I am.
Going to multiple different locations.
My assumption is it'll, it'll happen almost automatically, but obviously the more planning the administration has in place in terms of training and outreach and being able to answer questions so that people don't get frustrated and don't have the kind of experience that other users of service of public websites that we're going mentioned have had in the recent. If we can avoid that, we'll be all set.
We'll have a section of the website available too that will give directions on how to do things, so it'll be a nice way to look back and the help feature in, in Aspen's very good, even during.
It looks pretty straightforward, it doesn't look like it's, it's all that difficult to grasp.
Even state reporting is 100 times easier doing it from here than Reddiker was. Reddiker, you'd have to add all the leading zeros for 52 columns of data. For Sims, this pumps it out and it's done. It's beautiful, it's been great.
I'm familiar with leading zeros on the.
So we've been implementing for a while, I'd just like to go on the record and thank Natalie and Mike, they were the spearhead for the implementation, the training and everything else, so they deserve all the credit for it.
Well, thank you. Anything else, folks, on this?
All right, super duper.
Thank you.
Maybe one more thing, just a word of caution, when you fill out your school information form for your children, quite often, I know as a family for some reason we did this, either the husband or the wife becomes the primary contact. If you've done that and we haven't caught it, that means that you may have one parent that have, has access to one of your child's portals and the other one won't. So if that happens, just phone the school and we'll straighten it out. What we would like to do is have one password per family, that way everybody can, can see the fields that they need to see. My kids used to love it because my wife used to be the primary and they didn't realize that as a district superintendent I had access to all the markets.
Is, is there the flexibility in some, some family situations, there's, may not be as collegial?
We can do it. We have, we have the ability to, to take care of that, that's a good point. It, it can be done.
Thank you.
Okay, we were going to have some Littleton track organization, but nobody's here right now. So Littleton Wrestling Program, Jim?
Yeah. All right, thank you. My name is Jim Kennedy, James Kennedy, and I live at 50 Gilson Road in Littleton. And I'm also the head wrestling coach for Littleton Youth Wrestling, which is a park and rec program that is currently wrestling and practicing at Russell Street Cafeteria. And I'm here to ask the committee's support to relocate the team to Shaker Lane Gym for several reasons that I outlined. The most important one to me and the one that really is a problem is getting our kids to bed earlier, our younger kids. Majority of our kids are grades K through four and we've received complaints from a lot of the parents where they're getting kids home late by the time they shower, which is very important to shower after wrestling practice. They shower, they eat, they do their homework, they get what needs to be done, they go to bed, some of them after nine. So, you know, and here's one of them, this is my boy. So I'm here for my boy too, as well as the other 25 kids that are grade K through four who get home late at night. So just a brief, a brief history, a year ago, we were actually at the Shaker Lane practicing and, and it was going well except there was some concerns with storage of our wrestling mat. So we proposed building a shed at Shaker Lane School and at the time, it seemed to work for us and it would fit and we contacted the administration, worked out some of the details, but there was some concern, so we looked, we looked at a few other places and identified Russell Street School Cafeteria. And at the time, you know, I thought it was okay, I thought it might work out, but it's been a year and we, we went through a whole year of breaking down chairs, breaking down tables, putting them on the side, setting up the mats. By the time we got the whole setup done, we were always late for practice, so, and what that means is we're always getting out late. The other thing at Russell Street School, I hadn't realized this at the time, when I agreed to, to go to the cafeteria was that Tiger's Den has to have the facility until six and can't let anyone in the building, so no one can actually come help set up the mats early. So, so basically at six o'clock, the doors open and we have to, we can go in at that time and, and set up for wrestling, so. So we're looking for a change. At Russell Streets, at Shaker Lane School, we'll be able to actually start at 5:30 and there won't be the setup and the breakdown. So I'm looking forward to possibly, you know, getting our kids out, having a much easier time, you know, starting the wrestling program. It's Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so it's quite a, quite a job setting up and, and getting the kids going, so.
Any questions? Do you have any input from the administration side?
I had an opportunity to talk with Principal Fairty and he, he's fine with the proposal and certainly isn't in conflict with any events that are going on in the school.
Do you have any input from the building inspector, our maintenance?
In, in what regard?
No, it's to put a structure anywhere near our structures.
Well, before, before we would have the shed moved, we would certainly have all that figured out. So at this point in time, you know, until we know what direction the school committee would like to go in, we didn't do too much extra work on it.
When we explored the option a year ago at Shaker Lane, I did consult with the building inspector and the fire department to work out the proposed location, that was a year ago. I'd have to touch base and make sure it's still okay.
But you had one at the time.
We had one at the time.
It was acceptable to them.
That's correct.
If the fire department didn't want it up against the building, that's why they proposed putting it up by the bomb house.
Correct.
But the DPW did have some reservations about being, the DPW of Bill Maher had some reservations about being on a bomb house for reasons of snow removal and that kind of thing. But all Park and Rec, is they, given any insight or input?
Yeah, they, they're supportive of, of, of the move as possible. Yeah, they're supportive. They don't use the, the Russell Street Gym as a main place for.
Shaker Lane.
Shaker Lane, right, yeah. Shaker Lane is a main place where activities happen. Most of the park and rec programs happen in the other gyms. Basketball specifically is very.
That was one of the questions I had, so it is the Russell, the Shaker Lane Gym not the gap?
Correct, yes, Shaker Lane Gym.
Because I know when we visited this last year, there were some reservations about the width of the Shaker Lane Gym being, I think it's 32 feet and the mats were 36 feet, so concerns with.
Well.
Green walls.
Yeah, at the time, the, what was passed around was we would use the Shaker Lane for competition. So we're in the process of buying new competition mats. So we wanted to have our competition in a place where the competition mats would fit. But the competition mats would be, when we actually have competition, we could bring that, those to another, you know, to Russell Street Gym when it's not being used. And we've been coordinating with basketball to get access to the, to the Russell Street Gym. So Shaker Lane would only be used for practice and that's what we'd like to propose.
There's a lot of great information here, it's very thorough. I don't certainly have any issues with it. Certainly done your homework and I think this is a good, a good improvement, not just for, for your program, but of course for, for our work too, because those tired kids then come to school the next day and, you know, it's good if they have a full night's sleep, so thank you.
I mean, I'm going to say Bo Jim and trying to think about how, you know, we can put these kinds of programs on and have a positive impact on the kids and, you know, we're always trying to find a solution that works and, you know, like when we schedule basketball, we always do the younger kids early and the older kids later, I mean, these are things we think about all the time, so, I mean, I'm definitely sympathetic to what you're trying to do and I think it's worthwhile. to do, and I think it's worthwhile. As far as I'm concerned, as long as we can make it work relative to, you know, the physical plan, there's no reason why that particular facility shouldn't be used. I think it's somewhat underutilized. There's not a lot of usage for it. And if we have one, then I think we should take advantage of it. I think it's a no-brainer. But again, it's just, you know, the devil's in the details relative to, you know, some of the issues that were raised. So if we can get those ironed out, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I had three questions that were pending from last time when we had this discussion, which was the size of the facility. You've addressed that one. Location of the shed, we've talked about some options for that. And then the scheduling. And again, I think you've addressed that, as well as worked with, worked through the administration to, you know, to make sure that there's sort of a coordinated position, which I think I greatly appreciate, you know, that process being used here, too. So, I mean, I, you know, I think this is, sounds like it's the right kind of moves to make for the program at this point. And, you know, I think it's something I could support here also. Definitely could support this, so.
So what are our options? What's the real question here? I guess it's...
One of the reasons it moved to Russell Street last year was because of some reservations about the structure being, where it was being located, because the fire department didn't want it up against the building. And moving it over next to the pump house, there was some reservations from gym relative to snow removal. There was also some reservations relative to parking for baseball. So essentially, you're moving two parking spaces.
The building is usable and highly desirable to be used. Speaking of the school building itself, it now becomes a storage shed where we cite it.
Right.
How do we crack that nut? Not that we cite it tonight, but what do we need to do to crack that nut, get it cited someplace, so that's nearby?
I think we need to really understand what the issue about locating it next to the pump shed. I mean, when it was located at Russell Street, it's up next to the building, so we obviously were able to deal with fire issues associated with that. And it's near another structure, so the access and snow removal piece is there. So I guess, I think it just needs to really understand what is the concern about citing it either to the left or the right of that building there, because, I don't know, just looking at the picture, it's hard to see that it's gonna interfere with the door, which is only on one side and not on either side there. So it's not gonna be blocking the door. It's not clear, based on the slopes there, they may have to do some grading or something, that that's really parking there. And again, I don't see the issue of the file going by. So I don't know what the real issue is, like saying, like, it can't go there. And maybe we just need to get a crisper answer on why it can't go there rather than where should it go.
Can you tell me about service?
Mr. Chairman, if I can comment on Daryl's comment about the other side of the shed from the proposed location. The other side of the shed has some underground pipes as part of the septic system.
Okay, I can see it in the picture.
Yeah.
All right, so we're all supportive of using the building, and then working with anybody else in town we need to cite the building nearby. Is that?
Storage shed.
Storage shed. All right. Who wants to run with that with the town?
I mean, I could do that, if you'd like. I had one other follow-up question. It was about, how would you move your building from where it's at to over here?
I'm worried about it.
Well, that's something that...
Have you ever seen wrestlers train? They're serious, they'll do it.
It's a bank commercial.
Yes. So we have the support of some parents who are in the trades, construction trades. That's how we build it, you know. Phil Sturz is here, him and some volunteers. He owns a construction firm.
They have the move.
And both of his boys wrestle with us. You know, Greg Smith, his son wrestles with us. He has an excavation company that he owns, always, you know, operates with heavy machinery. So we have the expertise with our parents from the community who are willing to help us out. Now, whether or not we move the shed or propose to build a new one, you know, we wanna work with you guys. Which would you prefer?
At one point in time, we put in some dimensional information relative to putting the shed at Shaker Lane. I don't know if that changed, because it was tight, if I recall, Jim, when you first came forward to fit. Because that's why you did the whole layout of the mats and everything, right?
Right.
So I think we can work with that.
Bill, do we need a building permit?
No.
To move it, we don't? But to build a new one, we do?
Because it's a town facility, you don't need a building permit. Or especially for a shed that size, you don't need one anyway.
I'd ask that we do coordinate with Rowland, though, building inspector.
I can do that if you want.
Yeah, please. No, it just keeps everybody in the loop.
Yeah, that's how we do it.
You know Bill well.
It's 12 by 16 where it is right now. I don't know if that's too big for Shaker Lane. Don't know if it has a use where it is right now. It's a great shed. It's already there. Maybe something could be worked out where it stays and we build a new shed that, you know, makes that a little bit better.
Are we okay to let the administration make the final decision on the citing based on inputs from Highway?
Highway Fire Building Inspector.
The standard people that need to coordinate.
And Park and Rec.
American.
Have Steve invite him to the table.
I can coordinate all that.
Is that, are we okay with that?
Yep.
And if there are any issues with that, just let us know. Keep us informed.
Where they come to a decision, brief us on it first, please, before you execute, and at least gives us visibility on the final process.
Okay.
Be okay with that?
Okay. Absolutely.
That sounds great. Thank you for the support.
Do we need a motion, or do you just?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think.
Not yet.
Yeah?
If you wanna make one. I don't think we need to, but...
I think you need a motion.
Okay. No problem.
I don't want to make a motion every time somebody goes to use our facilities, which is what we're doing.
Oh, no, I mean, it's about authorizing them to relocate their program as possible.
They'll be coming to us for a chance.
Okay.
Anything else?
Good. Thanks, Jim.
Does that mean that we can call the ops and have our practices switched now so that we can start practicing there, or do we have to wait until we have a building there?
And just shuttle the mats, Raina?
Yeah, well, last year, Kathy let us keep them, they just roll up, and the ones we have now roll up into six tight standup, yeah. And last year, she let us keep them on the side.
Is that what you answered that?
I'm sorry?
Work with the administration, because right now, the school committee doesn't get to that level of who uses the building when they use it.
Okay, so we can...
That's between you all.
On storage.
A phone call to switch. That's all I want to know, so we can start the practices.
We don't want to mock it up.
We just wanna practice and get all good.
I understand. Thank you. Anything else on wrestling? Cindy, I saw you came in. Would you like to talk to us about LTO and bricks?
So, yeah, we were before you in March, or April, March, with the approval for the brick campaign, which is for the area by the new track and near the storage shed. And so that's been going forward, and we have just recently set a deadline of January 15th to have all the orders in. That way, we can get them to the company that's gonna be doing the engraving, and that they'll be ready for an early spring, you know, of putting in the block. So that's kinda where we're at. I think the deadline, you know, is helpful with the holidays right around the corner here, and hopefully, we'll get, we probably have about 60 bricks we need to still sell, and so hopefully, we'll get that in these last couple months.
Doing the bizarre?
Yep, we're doing the bizarre.
And we also had a question about commercial.
Correct. Right, we have not been soliciting businesses, but we have had three businesses that have come in, and so we were looking for guidance, because when we...
We don't need their names right now. Tell us what type of businesses, please. This is their rent. One's law.
One's a camp, one's a law office, and one's a liquor store.
One's a liquor store. And that's why I asked Cindy to come to us tonight, because of that. You know, we had this discussion previously, and I'm certainly of the mind that it falls, to have a commercial concern, do a brick like that, falls within the boundaries of what we've decided before our advertising policy. My concern, though, was, given what we, you know, alcohol-free, tobacco-free, et cetera, the schools, and in fact, we'd allow no alcohol at all in the schools, regardless if it's an adult event, no children present or not, at this point. So the liquor store one, first off, in general, that could be obviated. If in general, we don't want anybody that does business to buy a brick, that'd be the first question, because then it obviates any other concerns I may have. What's all you, what's on?
Can I touch on a couple of things?
Please.
We, at our last policy meeting, I discussed this with Kelly, and, you know, we spent a lot of time on advertising, and actually, we're revisiting it this year again to look at some little cleanups there, because advertising is prevalent, and we need to make sure that we're dealing with it in a realistic piece here. We discussed a proposal about allowing recognition plaques, of which a brick could fall into that category of, to formally recognize donations by people. I think we're talking also like a rotary plaque on the ticket shed there. It's actually technically a form of advertising there. So we're looking at whether, basically allowing recognition plaques that would recognize a donation by an organization, not necessarily advertising a product. So, you know, you know, just to use the extreme, drink Coke would not be an appropriate recognition plaque, supported by your friends at Coca-Cola, supporting public education, you know, something that's along the lines of recognizing the company's commitment towards the educational objectives of the school, not a product there. Process-wise, we're gonna try something a little different, because it's always difficult to get inputs on it. I asked Kelly to first circulate it to the parent councils at the school, and we're also gonna look at trying to touch base with the PTA. I haven't had a chance to touch base with the LTO, just to sort of start sounding out whether that kind of language resonates with the community before trying to bring it up for a public hearing again here, just in terms of a process change, because, you know, it can be an emotional topic, and I wanted to try to bound where we're thinking about, but also sound out the community as we're doing it. So I have that draft, that worked with Kelly, that we're trying to start the circulation process on that there. So it's not quite on the timeline that you're asking for, but I just wanted to thought this would be a good opportunity to touch base of what we're thinking about, trying to shape that so that we can recognize companies do wanna make donations, and also, you know, at some level, need a little bit of recognition for that. And it will also help us, I think, in the event that we got some kind of large-scale donation that may come with, you know, a kicker that they want recognition back there, and try to accommodate that in an updated advertising policy. I hope to have that maybe within a month or so, but I'm not sure it's on the timeline that you're talking about for this. But I just wanted to, again, just let you know where our thoughts were from our last meeting on that.
I guess at first blush, I would have reservations about saying, go ahead, liquor store, but then if Tedeschi's came forward, or Common Convenience came forward, and they said that they wanted to buy a brick, they sell beer in line. So, I don't know, it poses some challenges, and it's literally just three commercial entities?
That's what's come in at this point. Like I said, we haven't solicited them. They've just, we have it up on the website. People have, you know, made their way there, and they've shown up, and we haven't done anything with them at this point. We haven't even cashed a check, so we're just waiting for guidance. And we can, we say on the form that all the bricks are subject to school committee approval, so if you opt not to, that's not a problem for us, but...
In absent, in absent a tightened up policy, we don't allow any commercial activity at the time. I don't know, it's a...
We did punt last year on this. We indicated we'd address it, yeah.
I mean, I definitely don't think that the liquor store is appropriate. I don't necessarily have a particular problem with the other two entities, and I'm splitting hairs, because I feel like the brick walk, there's gonna be so many names in there that it's really not a, it's not as obvious, it's not as, you know, dynamic as if you put it on a scoreboard or, you know, some other type of edifice that would have more clarity standing out there. So I'm gonna sort of make an exception relative to what we may decide down the road. I don't think it's gonna be, you know, I don't think we're gonna be putting ourselves in a position where we're really contradicting ourselves in this instance. Having said that, if we're only talking about three, I'm not gonna object if we decide to kinda hold off and see if we can, if LTO can get to their goal without the commercial, then we could do that, too.
Question for Kelly, or perhaps for Daryl, depending. Are we able to sort of categorically distinguish between one commercial institution and another, whether or not we, do we have to either say yes to all three or no to all three? Are we allowed to make that distinction?
No, we have the ability to differentiate. My concern is, are we differentiating on the name, or are we differentiating on the merchandise? I mean, you could have a liquor store that was under Jack's Enterprises, right? So that's not necessarily gonna say Jack's Beer Outlet. So where's the line? And I guess that's something that would be clarified.
And I, you know, the convenience store is a good example. There, they sell cigarettes, which we don't allow. They sell, some of them sell alcohol, which we don't allow. So I think, to me, part of it is in context of, you know, like I said, I'm not opposed to, you know, your friends at Tedeschi's, supporting public education. I'm not making any comment on what they sell there. It's a legal business within the, you know, the thing. That's the slope that I'm trying to figure out how you crisply articulate which ones you will and will not accept from. And at the same way, we, I think we already are facing that situation on an informal basis that we haven't recognized, and the new policy will address that. But, you know, the scholarship, you know, pamphlet that they hand out at graduation, that's actually a form of advertising. I mean, we are obviously recognizing all of the donations that come into the pieces there. Most of them recognize either their company name or the individuals that donated. So in a way, we're already at that point, and there is some discretion about how and who we accept donations from in that process, because there is, you're right, there's a slope there about whether a legally authorized business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you know, and what do you say yes or no on that. But I think we've also empowered some common sense and judgment in terms of the administration, in terms of recommendations, that they would, obviously, if they're not comfortable bringing it forward, we probably shouldn't be talking about some of the pieces there. So I think empowering the administration, which, again, the updated policy provides that filtering and discretion, that we're not bound to accept the donation either.
But it gives us the opportunity to have a conversation.
Right.
I like that. I like that distinction.
You know, so, I mean, that's where I'm trying to go with the policy to, you know, to bring that type of recommendation forward.
But to your point, the devil's, and how you word that in a concise way, that gives us that discretion.
Yeah, and right now, unfortunately, I do have to have an example in there, and I'm trying to look at the wording to see if it could pull it more to its crisper in its definition, but we'll, I need a little bit, you know, I'm gonna try to solicit a little bit of feedback.
Because we do have, we do accept donations from institutions like Donaldland or Subshop, which do have liquor licenses. So how do we navigate that arena?
So we won't consider these three donations tonight? Consider them tonight? And then Cindy can give us full names? We're not gonna consider no names necessary.
I...
I'd like to see if they can get to the goal. Both the three in play. I mean, I'm just gonna use a name. I don't know if this is, it's Steve Mark Law Firm. Steve Mark has recently bought a brick.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, he could use his Steve Mark Law Firm checkbook to pay for the brick, but it's gonna say Steve Mark and family or something like that. We need to be careful if we're, so Daryl's talking about saying, in support of, in support of Littleton Public Schools or something like that, this is a fundraiser for the LTO. So we can do it's, I think I...
So sort of the same thing?
I tend, yeah, I think it is the same thing, yes.
All right, others?
Fine with that.
I'd like to take it sometime and see what we...
Yeah, and if you like, I'll try to accelerate the review of the draft to try to bring that forward a little sooner. It's been working.
Saturday and Sunday, instead of just all day Sunday?
Please thank the folks.
You wait till the, here tonight.
I saw.
There's fifty of them in there.
Please thank the folks, and certainly, nearly, probably all of us know all three... Please thank the folks and certainly nearly probably all of us know all three principals. And we'd be plenty happy to speak to them if they wish, or if you could explain, please, how tonight bore out. If that's okay.
Yeah.
Now, that said.
Like I said, we haven't cashed those checks because they've all come in recently in the last couple of weeks, so we'll send that back and I guess we'll also probably just update our information just to specify that.
Certainly, please also transmit our gratitude, the gracious offer. We do appreciate that. But I hope folks through this discussion that we spent the time, it was important enough to us and to the community to put this time to it and understand where we are at this point.
So, one of them, just to mention, was, it was a company and so-and-so family as well, so if they take out the company, I guess.
Family's fine.
Yeah, if you can get those checks to cash.
Well, now, hold on. You might have to secure the family name first.
If it's Frizzoli.
I'm only kidding, we're all there.
Okay. All right, who did I make the check out to?
Well, the parent organization.
LTO, all right. There you go.
That's not what she said, she said, well, the parent organization. She'll cash it.
Where's your form with what you wanted to say?
It says it in the memo. Does that work?
That's perfect, thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
Daryl, I think that's a great idea to float that kind of stuff to the parent councils and the PTA, you know, instead of us just going right from us to like a public forum. I'm surprised we never thought about that before. First of all, a lot of those people are the ones that come to the public forum anyway, so kind of, you know, cut to the chase a little bit. But I think we can definitely get a good idea of whether or not anything else is required or do we need, how big a room do we need, you know, that kind of thing. So, I think that's a great idea.
Hopefully.
Brilliant.
It's what it's mine.
All right. Capital. Do we have the final copy? Everybody can review it? Are there any discussion, is there any discussion on that list? I think we agreed to previously.
Just an additional question about the list. The items we're not, we're not going to be prioritizing within our expected, the expected money we'll be able to use. Are we under any sort of legal liability or risk of any issue for safety issues? For example, a playground, which certainly is not something that we think we're able to take care of this cycle. Are we at risk?
Well, we ascertain risks every day and we make a call. If we have a equipment that becomes hazardous, we shut it down. So, it's part of our responsibility. At this point in time, we don't feel that we're at that point, but everybody in this room realizes that the acceptable codes for playgrounds have changed drastically in the last eight to 10 years. And a lot of the equipment is grandfathered and, you know, we're cognizant that we need to do something, but we're certainly not at the point where we're going to have to shut that playground down.
Okay.
And we did have it inspected professionally a couple of years ago and did address the issues that were raised at that point in time and any concerns, so.
Great, thank you.
I don't think so because Mike.
It's already been, sorry, it's already been submitted. It was due at the end of the month.
And Michael Lee speaking with Fincom or Sleipen this Saturday, joint session, so.
Do you want any trail leaders there? In the form of the four of us, I mean?
No. One of us has associated with bad enough.
Okay, goals. Let's jump into those puppies. All right, so.
Hold on, hold on.
You not ready yet?
No, but I think you forgot the MASC or something. Gold is a little farther down the list, right? Number four.
Oh, I saw, I was on financial state. All right, go ahead.
Okay, though. We certainly have carryover from last year and last meeting we spoke about, I took in a little bit more for the delete, add, modify. So, why don't we just start right at the top with budget, go on down and how much, how many.
You can actually see the suggested changes on the Google Docs and I went in today and played with it a little bit and added your suggestions, PJ, excuse me, Daryl sent this a little too late, I didn't have a chance to get them in there, but it does give you an idea of some of the work that's been done to this point in time.
The yellow highlight is telling us.
That would indicate comments.
I had made a couple of comments.
By Alex.
Right, different sort of.
There should be a comment field that's accessible.
I can just go down and I have them, I've written them all down here in case those aren't, so I can make my comments.
Yeah, and the Cliff Noe version, because, just to read through entirely, I don't know, do we need that, are you going to be compelling persuasive enough?
I mean, they're pretty straightforward, I think, I think they're pretty easy to get.
So, let us see, then we have, then we just go down and you guys just scroll through them.
Do you want me to just start with budget then?
Yeah, it's the first one, so we might as well.
Okay.
So, scroll us back so we see.
So, the comments I made there, mostly just developing a framework for a budget process.
You have hard copies in your yellow folder.
So, my language for what goal one could be for budget would be to develop, present, adopt and publish a framework for the budget process. The framework should describe who is responsible, whether it's a school function or a superintendent function or a function from business manager, that sort of thing, when each step in the process will occur and how the public can be informed and involved throughout that process.
Okay, so what's the goal?
Develop, present, adopt and publish a framework for the budget process.
Okay, as you're kind of doing a process, taking a third process, the goal, that's what you have the objectives and the milestones for is to get into the process level. Do you have a succinct budget goal there that covers what you want and then we start getting into the various objectives and then the milestones to achieve those objectives?
So, you'd like the milestones to reflect more of the, the goal should be more general and the milestones would tell us what we have, how we get there.
Well, the objective now starts attacking each of the, each portion of the goal to bring it to fulfillment and milestones occur, you know, they're phase points.
Right.
So, like dates are always good. Dates are some kind of quantity, something that's very quantifiable in the milestone. Discussion at September School Committee Meeting, for example, right now, is very objective and quantifiable.
Specific, measurable.
Yeah. We want two budget updates a year.
Something like that, yeah.
So, that's how, and then that becomes an objective and then the milestone is September and December, as an example now. That'd be the best way of, I think, developing our goals, somewhat in line with the way we've been doing it here recently now. You said good things. I mean, it's all excellent stuff and certainly everything doing that works to fulfilling the goal of having the committee in the budget process. So, now, what are some of the specific things we need to do to do that?
I wrote these down as milestones, if we'd rather put that as objectives, that's okay. And if we want to tweak these, that's fine. What I, what I sort of crafted was, would be then for milestone one for that, for that objective, would then be to have an initial discussion of the budget process framework at a full school committee meeting early in the, early in the process, have one or two members draft what that framework could look like, bring it back to the full committee for the committee to approve and then that process would sort of be our north star, if you will, to, and for the public to figure out where we are in each of the, you know, as we move through the process where we are.
That's the subcommittee, isn't it? Major subcommittee?
Yeah.
The biggest change from, I think, from present procedure and policy would be that it's really spelled out, much in the same way that Bonnie Holson does for the whole town process.
She's a full town employee.
Right.
Yeah, but you, and you checked the target when you said process. She's writing a process. Goals are not processes.
The goal here would be to, to describe what the process is so that the public can become more aware.
Then that becomes a goal unto itself, describe, if the goal is described, which really becomes an objective, it's not a goal. And then milestones to that become how you, you know, step by step go to the objective to meet the overall goal of townwide knowledge, townwide awareness. So, like, point could be a goal, ensure townwide awareness of the school committee budget process. Now, whether the objective to get there and what milestones we have to be marking out to see that we're progressing satisfactorily towards the objective to support the goal, that's what we'd be looking for. Goals should not be multi-sentence, should be very succinct.
Develop and publish a framework for the budget process, or rather, rather that would be, the goal here, I guess, would be improve the information accessible to the public for our budget process, however we would want to phrase it. You know, what, how would you like to phrase this? Because I think, I think everyone would probably get on board with the concept, how we word it is.
Actually, how you word is very important.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I want to.
Right, because the word develop is no good because we already have it, we have a process, you know, so we're not going to, I mean, if you feel like we need to improve upon them, certainly we're going to entertain suggestions, but the develop makes it sound like it's in its absence of process. We have a process. You know, I think some of the things you, you're talking about are very good about, you know, we can add transparency, we can put more information out there, we can follow timelines, you know, spell them out and spell them more closely, I don't have any objections to that, but we've just got to be careful about how we're talking about it because there's definitely a process for the budget in there.
Sure.
Paul? Yes, sir. I'd like to maybe just step back and if you wouldn't mind bringing up the email I sent, sorry, at the last minute. I looked at all of the goals and there was something that I wasn't sure, I'm not sure I have them phrased in the, in the specific terminology you're looking for here, but I was wondering if this might be an opportunity to step back and look slightly differently at how we're stating what our goals are here and if you could bring that up, I'd appreciate that. Here. So, I looked at maybe looking at three top level goals here and can you blow that up a little bit so that, I'm not sure, unfortunately, I sent that too late for everybody to make sure they had a printed copy here. One of the things I think is important for the school committee and we talked a little bit about it is, is having the advocacy of the student learning front and foremost as, you know, the goal and mission of funding on this board. And I almost felt obligated to have that as one of our goals and had, I then looked at what we had and maybe use those as actually the objectives of what we want to accomplish within that goal here. One, and I can catch up to where, I think, what the budget one is going to be in a minute here, expand visibility of district successes. You know, I think we, putting that more in the forefront of what we're looking at and we're doing it, is there more we can do and better ways we can do it? How we detail that out isn't, I don't have that covered in the format here. Expand support with the town boards of the education needs. We had a very good series of meetings over the last year there, but there's still a little ways to go on making sure the other boards understand the nuances of why we need funding for different activities. If I hit objective three, expand community awareness of education funding process and needs. I think what we do is pull the budget micro detail of what process we're using or another pieces there to a little higher level objective of what are we doing to keep the community informed, not just of the budget process, but what are the trade-offs we're making? How are they a partner in those, in those decisions and move the objective and goal up just a little higher level and, and not get into being front and foremost on our priority list, just developing a specific process that we're going to publish and follow, where we've had a process, maybe it needs improving, but I don't think that's what the whole focus of the board should be. I think our focus should be is, is are we properly keeping the community abreast of what our budget finance needs are? And that keeps us a little bit more focused on, on what the true objective is, not just the, the micro details. So, that's just an approach I'm proposing for restructuring and restating the goals. And I could go through each one in that kind of manner.
I wonder what you have there? Thing is, we were two parallel discussions.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to throw this out before we delve into all the other ones because I think this might give us a different way of, could we rethink and look at how we're stating the rest of those goals into maybe a slightly different means of having the rest of this discussion.
You want to use it as an example and I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
And as far as goal writing, certainly much closer to, I think, what is pretty much, I don't want to say standard because certainly different organizations do it somewhat differently, but I think when you get into broad academic world and business world for that matter and many other organizations, the goals are usually succinct. The objectives address the goals specifically, no milestones here, but sorry, we have some previous. But Alex, you see, you know, what Daryl's saying as far as the approach to actually writing the goal itself?
Yeah.
And then if you're talking that you want to make this the number one goal, that's a third conversation now. But as far as style, if that was your objective.
And also focus here, you know, I think, I think it makes a big statement as to what your fir, your first goal is. Is it your number one goal or is it not? And I think, again, I think it makes an important statement that what we put is the first goal.
And now that's a third bit, the priority of the goal.
Right.
All right. But our goals are in support of, in order to attain, in support of our vision, our mission and our core values.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, goals, what the mission, the vision tells you where you're headed to get there and core values are, what you really believe.
Much, right.
I should never have a goal, achieve my core values.
What, what may be helpful is, you know, for, for the first goal on budget, Alex, if you draft up something with those kinds of guidelines, send it to me and I'll help you word some.
Sure.
Then for the next meeting, we can bring it back and entertain greater discussion. A couple of things though, as a, as a school committee, you have to remember, you've charged a subcommittee with a budget process and either you embrace that concept or you decide to change it. You can't have it both ways. If you want to work as a subcommittee and have them bring the information to you as they build the budget, that works very well, but if you want to change the process, then you would change the, the way you form goals. So, just, just some food for thought there.
Kelly, I don't think, you know, it'd be clear, I don't think anybody's advocating to change in that process.
Okay, well, I just want to put it out there so that people understand, so when the goals come to me, I can, I can draft them with that in mind.
Well, then we're. It's more of a discussion during the summer retreat.
Right.
It's a much broader.
Exactly.
But it's not where we got full committee, any pretty, each time there's a budget meeting, you know, working with Bonnie and everything else.
Right.
So, if you're okay with that, then.
Yeah.
And I have no problem if you want to start off with a priority and say, this should be our first goal, this should be our second goal, this should be our third, and then attack each one, if that's how you want to approach it.
But we kind of prioritize goals within, we had a budget goal, we had a policy goal, a communication goal, so it wasn't like the policy goal is the number one, it's Daryl's number one goal.
No, and, and you know, with what we have right here, Daryl is advocating that our advocacy of students be our first goal and then other things. And I can see a cascading set of goals, although because we're the school committee, we're not the ones charged with the actual education advocacy.
Right.
I think you make a good point.
I think what Daryl was alluding to, Daryl, correct me if I'm on the wrong path, is that you use the advocacy component to drive the budget. In other words, if you're looking at a particular goal in terms of advancement of technology, then there would be a budget component in the process of that goal. I'm not sure, Daryl, whether that's the direction you were going in or not.
I guess I wasn't necessarily drilling into any specific subset of it at this point. I wanted, you know, like I said, I apologize for getting it up late to, to everybody here in terms of having too much in back of it that looks like I just wanted to bull through all of the goals here. I wanted to facilitate the discussion about, in one way, pulling it up a little bit here on it so that, again, we, and that's actually, I'm going to jump into my other ones where I did goal two is streamline committee operations, where we're, we spend our time here and the valuable time we have with the senior staff to focus on the issues, not just, you know, time we have with the senior staff to focus on the issues, not just, you know, some of the things that we need to do as part of the business, but there might be better ways of using their time that we have with them here. And do we put that front and foremost as a goal of this committee, you know, to continue the refinement of our own internal process here for these meetings? And then I picked my favorite policy one. I want to continue, obviously, continue the comprehensive policy review that's been underway for the last four years, three years.
It doesn't support streamlining committee operations. Daryl.
You know, and then the question mark there is, is I didn't necessarily recategorize the other goals that might have fallen under that same kind of binning. And then I think the third one I just threw out there is, is we do have a major initiative, which is updating the district vision this year. You know, the administration is working that. Part of our advocacy is supporting of that, but I think, again, that might be another one that's tied clearly to shooting forward all of our educational goals and objectives there, as opposed to picking one that just says the technology component of the district vision, at least this year, until we get the new vision in place. And then we can then, next year, select a subset of that that might need more focus from advocacy from the committee perspective. That's just my thought behind this proposal and possible recategorization.
Okay. So, we've discussed a little bit of how to actually formulate the goals. While, as soon as we walk out of the room, we'll have five different ideas as to what we may have discussed on that particular issue. But at least as we sit here presently, do we seem to be the same mind, where it's certainly a succinct statement, the objective supports the goal attainment, and milestones measure progress towards attainment of the objective? Are we all on board with that?
Roger.
Daryl? Yeah, I mean, the milestone part, I think, is an important piece, whether it's in the primary document or as a supplement. I like the primary piece to be a little bit more concise. The milestones lengthen it out, but process-wise, I'm fine with that also.
Yeah. If the, one thing that I'd like us to do year to year, and this is certainly something we do already, but just to keep this in mind, that the milestones aren't just for how we know we're accomplishing the task, but when we go to the next year's goals, we want to look back and see where we landed. So, they're also useful for evaluating ourselves and how we do.
That's what makes those milestones so important.
Exactly.
December 25th, Santa Claus is there. December 26th, there was no Santa Claus, we failed.
Yeah, that's a problem.
And we will not fail.
Exactly.
Santa Claus will visit us. Okay, with that said, and actually, the conversation is very important, too. It doesn't bother me that tonight we're not going to have goal one through N all fully fleshed out, is that we're talking about these sorts of things, and we're in sync on it. That's a goal that the school committee, not as that ironclad one mind, when it comes to a consensus, and I think we're achieving that. Daryl, to your point as far as structure, I think milestones have to be identified or associated with the objective.
That's...
If we go that way, please. We've got to be careful about, again, you know, it's always that balance of too succinct. Do I stay in or get out? Okay, two-seat airplane, the guy in the backseat may bail out when he hears the front seat to say that. So, pretty concise, but all he was saying, you know, do I stay in the Air Force, do I get out of the Air Force? But he was too concise, the information was bad. It's happened, folks. So, caution us there, please, on that. But certainly, I would say, let's pair towards your direction. So, that's it. You will work with Kelly, then?
Yeah.
Some of your thoughts there, Kelly?
I will put Daryl's thoughts down on the Google Doc.
All in all, I'm kind of happy with them. They need adjustment, don't misunderstand me, and some of them need, actually, just get rid of, like, for example, jointly collaborate, deliver the teacher evaluation process. Goal two under assessment, done. So, that's a deleted goal now.
Actually, under the Google Doc document, when I went in today, I lined out a lot of those things.
All right. Pursuit of excellence, you know, those need updates, and some of them can change. Public announcement volunteers, certainly it's another one we could do, just as an example, real fast. But obviously, these dates are all based on last year, so they must be updated. And the Google Doc is now pretty much all updated?
Just with the cross-outs, et cetera. I haven't put Daryl's information in, and when Alex has redone his information. What I can do, I think I moved too fast, I love Google Docs, but I don't think some of you are there yet. So, as I continue to work on this, I will take the lead in trying to make a document that we can take a look at and move around and revise for next meeting.
And that's next week. It's only seven days.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Well, I'll do my best. It may not be a finished product, but I'll, it shouldn't be a finished product at this point in time, anyway, but I'll incorporate what you said.
Yeah, no, I didn't put it into the document because it was last minute, and I didn't want to, I knew it was going to be brought up live on the screen, and I didn't want to mess up what everybody else was looking at.
And I think these conversations, certainly with the budget piece, having this feedback is very helpful when we go and flesh it out. So, that's something I definitely have a value.
Now, what I would like to do before we close out on this tonight, only because of where we are on the timeline of negotiations, and do you have it to...
It's actually on the Google Doc, so Steve, if you could move it up...
Negotiations, please.
To, it has LEA negotiations right on there. There you go. Talasized and bold.
We can work on this, so it's not the biggest deal. Charlie, first, let me see where we're at. How's that? And that'll help explain some of the timeline. As you may recall, Kelly suggested to us and the LEA that we pursue what's called interest-based bargaining. So, while in the past, referred to, we've been soft adversarial. It's my position, it's my position, now, we get to in the middle. So, it becomes a discussion on each other's positions versus our shared goals, our shared interests. Am I characterizing this correctly enough, Kelly?
You are.
We had our first night of training, Tuesday evening, four hours, where Kelly brought in some free help, by the way, because it's under federal and a state grant, grants, to do this sort of training. LEA folks were there, along with Chuck, myself, and Kelly, and it was a very good session. No negotiation, it was how to use the process. On the 25th, so next week, excuse me, two weeks, we will get together again, Thanksgiving week, to do another four hours of the training. At that point, or some short period thereafter, the two parties can say, this is the way we go, or if one says no, then it doesn't happen. But certainly, early returns are, both of us, LEA and the school committee, are pleased with that process. If we do that, we will have facilitator, a facilitator, work with us, and that's our call, too, as to whether or not we'd like that, but for another eight hours, a couple four-hour sessions or so, where we'd have that sort of help with us. If I'm not speaking well for you, please slap me.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. We seem to be leaning very much in that direction. We're all, you know, when you get down, we all know each other, okay? We're not unknown to each other in town, we're too small a town. So, it's certainly not something that we want to be adversarial, and if this is going to work for us, we want to go for it. So, I thought, you know, why not make it a goal for this school committee? And it puts some tight timelines on it, because, as you can see, scroll down to objective four, please. Is there more below it?
Yep, there is, next page.
Yeah. That last milestone, did I really put the 14th February? No, I put February 14th in in the year. But Valentine's Day is a love fest. Okay.
There was a communication gap, obviously.
It's doable.
Can fix it here?
Excuse me?
No.
It's doable. And if we've got it written down, and we all kind of worked toward it, what the heck? So, that's why I offered this as a goal for us, and see what we can do. Something we need to vote on this evening, but certainly, right now, Chuck and I are on track, like I think the LEA is also. Everybody wants it done soon. You know, Mike and I now have been involved with two negotiations over the years, having just, when we first got on the committee, inherited a recently negotiated contract. And we know it didn't work as perfectly as we would like it to. Doesn't mean this is going to work perfect, but there's promise here, is it'll come out much better than our last two, as far as the whole process of doing it. So, that's what this one's about, folks. And plus, it gives you an update where we are. When it's all said and done, we will keep negotiation sessions in camera, you know, we'll be private with each other. We're not going to negotiate in public, but as far as the process we're engaged in, we're plenty happy to share that with the folks. Any questions on that? Chuck want anything?
No. You know, it was just reiterate the fact that Kelly was able to get us this training for free, supported by the Gates Foundation and Mass Education Partnership, a few grants that made it possible. So, thank you for...
You're welcome.
Making it available to us all.
And Kelly's trained in the process already, has participated in it oftentimes enough. So, certainly, as a committee, you might depend on his recommendations and suggestions, and this one's panning out. The other's due, too.
Good to know.
Thank you. All right. Are we content, then? We're kind of punting Chief Kelly on this a little bit.
Sure.
Thank you. And then, once again, discuss next school committee meeting, a week from tonight?
Yeah, the only thing that I would ask, pursuit of excellence, I really think we need an update before we can write goals.
I can speak to that, please, if you want me to speak to that briefly.
Well, maybe we could, we could put it on the next meeting, or something, chairman, obviously, is to...
And you know what I'd like, if we could do this, because we've got two of you here right now, if maybe have some of the team members come to, and certainly, you know, a short presentation of, here's where we're at, here's what we're doing, it's nice, but to have a little bit of interaction, too. In fact, let's see, where I think we can have a better objective to meet the goal that we've set for that, is perhaps maybe a little more interaction between the school committee and the committee.
That's right on the notes. Since we began, starting this process, I've had a couple of conversations with members of the task force, and you hit it right on the notes. So, hopefully, by next week, we'll have something concrete to show forward.
We'll just add it to the agenda.
Would you like me to add that to the agenda?
You all okay with that? Next week, would?
Yeah.
Just as an awareness, we have our MCAS presentation next meeting, an hour and a half presentation, 10 minutes for questions. I can certainly expand that if you wish, but that'll give you an idea of...
What's the rest of the agenda looking like, then?
Your goals.
Yep.
And other than that...
We're starting early for the...
Yeah.
Right.
Get to that here, so...
So, that, we'll do a month-end lunch count review, and that's it.
All right, let's do this, then.
Is one week enough time? For P O E?
We've had conversations about it so far, so I think the hardest part for us so far has been nailing down a date for that, because we really want to have a date where we're going to come forward and present something.
Great.
Nailing down that date is mostly where, was a little bit of difficulty. Generally, within the span of, you know, one or two months is what we're, you know, choosing over. I think we can certainly come up with something that's progress by next week. If we're not there yet, we'll be very close.
I don't expect you to have the answer. You know, if you don't have it tonight, you're not going to have it a week from tonight, but as to where you're all at, that little bit of interaction would be helpful. All right, so you've seen the email about six o'clock starting next week, so this brings us up to now, agenda formulation.
Just one more, sorry, just one more thing on this. There are a couple more, more smaller issues with the goals, language mostly tweaking that. Do you want to continue that conversation next week, or do you want to...
Please.
Sure.
We're going to begin at 6:00 P.M., and PMBC, Permanent Misleading Committee, is going to come in and give us a facilities update, and it's the facilities management, which you've been working hand-in-hand with them. And the contractor that they went out to, feasibility study, will be here to present that to us. We've allocated an hour. The thought is, it won't take that much. We'll start at 6:00, nonetheless, unless they want to stop later, making do it. And do the agenda such that, if they're done at 6:30, we can do the housekeeping pieces.
So, we'll just open up the school committee meeting at 6:00, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, doing the housekeeping early doesn't bother me, but some of the meat we've just discussed now, you know, let's schedule that hard, beginning at 7:00. Is that okay, guys?
Yeah.
Time for the P O E, 20 minutes? Should that do it?
Yeah.
What do you guys think, 20?
Easily within 20 minutes.
All right. Chuck, Roland, and the rest, if they think something else is easily manageable.
We'll work out with Kelly and see the team.
Login in 20 minutes is good.
Pursuit of excellence.
Yep.
Perfect.
All right. So, we table goals till next week, we set at least an agenda format for next week. Ready to go into new business? Financial statement, Steve?
Sure, so you have a financial statement, if you can pass it. Give me a second, yeah, let me pull it up here. Sorry, I need to find it in here. Is it right, it's a big packet?
It is. It's toward the beginning.
While you're doing that, Daryl, give us an update on the conference, please.
It was a very interesting conference, let me just pull that...
You're talking about the MASC conference, and it was joint conference, right, with the MAS, the Mass Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, joint conference.
Yeah, so I, the day was, on Friday, there was some various panel discussions, I attended a couple of those, there was a keynote speaker at lunch, and then there was the conference keynote speaker, and then the resolutions, and just a couple of interesting pieces there. I attended the information session on interest-based bargaining there to just get a little bit more background on it, and it really looks like an interesting, perhaps more current approach to, you know, looking at the bargaining process there, as well as it filled in a little bit of detail on some terminology and other pieces that I wasn't quite aware of, sort of personal enrichment on that. I attended a session on special education, community, and social media panel discussion, and that one was, again, just, it was, I think it was Framingham, their superintendent, the director of special ed, their assistant superintendent, and one of the school committee members did a presentation on the different interactions between the community and the school system there. It's very informative, it's also surprising about how people don't really understand the roles that people play in the different parts there. There was a lot of school committee members asking questions, and quite a few times, unfortunately, the special ed teacher goes, that's nothing you should be involved in, you need to be making sure that they're referred to the, you know, to the appropriate things. It's a lack of understanding, there's a very specific set of laws that dictate and direct how the special ed process works, and it's not uncommon for school committee members to receive calls from parents, and then many of them feel they want to solve their problem, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I think there was some coaching from some of the special ed directors there on what the proper protocol should be for referring people back through to the appropriate people, and reminding them of limitations. You know, the school committee cannot override an IEP team assessment or request for services there, and not everybody quite understood the roles. And I found it was very informative and refreshing that we actually followed many of the appropriate accepted practices there. There was one interesting takeaway from one of the speakers about, I think it's in Sitewitt there, an activity called CourseFoundation.org, a community of resources for special education, and they're focusing on better integration between the special ed community and the other activities in town, such as park and rec, and community-led activities where there's better integration of the things there. And I brought that to this last CPAC meeting the other night, there's just another way of looking at how you get better and more interconnections between the pieces there, so they're not separate programs, and breaking down those barriers and walls that sometimes exist there on it. The lunch speaker spoke of Project 351, which I didn't, wasn't aware of that, that's where one student from each district in the state is selected, and they work on a larger community project. And we do have students participate in that program for the last two years, right?
Three years.
Three years.
It's a middle school program?
Yeah, I think it's for an eighth grader from each district in the state gets together. That might be something we want to just highlight a little bit in terms of what activities we've been doing. we've been doing.
Bring those students back in.
Here. And then the, just again, the keynote speaker for the conference used the Battle of Gettysburg as a discussion point for leadership traits. And he had an interesting handout. Let me find my, there. On everybody's seat was the Gettysburg Address. And I'm pretty sure all of us remember memorizing this in school. And what do you take away from memorizing this? Enough to get you past the test on that you memorized it. He used all of the leaders during the Gettysburg Battle and talked about leadership traits of each one of them. And while I'm terrible at names, and I don't remember the names associated with the person and their traits, but it was a much more engaging way of engaging history, as well as what do you take away from the discussion? And memorizing a speech, while it gets you certain things there, what you really want to do is walk away with the understanding of why and what they were doing there. And it, and it just gives you the message of make sure we're teaching the right thing to students. And I thought it was, like I said, I didn't walk away memorizing all of his seven traits of leadership that he was talking about, but it was much more effective than trying to memorize.
It seems like you memorized a four score Rebecca.
Well, but again, today, what do I walk away with? Just a bad memory of memorizing it, not the value of learning that could have been done for understanding the motivations of why decisions were made and what leadership traits the generals exerted and enlisted during that time. I thought it was a very powerful, refreshing way of thinking about how we look at history there. And then the resolutions, they all passed with actually relatively little discussion there. There was one modification to one of the resolutions, and I have that actually technically written down here, where in the park assessments, they wanted to, just additional languages added to indicate that, just having it directed to the districts that you will adopt this testing method, and it will be electronic, and you will have computers to do it with is an unfunded mandate piece there. And then the other part was people asking for where's the money for all of our infrastructure upgrades to administer the tests going to come from? Because they can administer the current testing without all of these technology upgrades that park testing is going to require it. They're asking the state to look at that as an unfunded mandate there. So all of the resolutions passed, and it was a very interesting and informative conference.
Any questions, Darrell?
The bit about the memorization piece sounds very much in line, I think, with some of the conversations we've been having at the task force, so I might have to pick your brain later at some point, so be warned. And if you don't remember that, I'll just remind you.
Well, it reminds you of what do you really want to take away from the history lesson?
Is it names and dates or is it something powerful that will help students later on in life? Thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Sure, so in your packet, there was a financial statement through October 31st, so it was for four months of the fiscal year, July through October. You can see from that report, we're approximately 30% expenditures expended of the appropriated budget, which is on track with where we expect it to be at this point in time. We do have some accounts we're watching, a couple of maintenance accounts that we're watching, roofing expenses, for instance, roof repair, we've kind of maxed that out. So we're just keeping an eye on that and those repairs as well. We're tracking our special ed costs and making sure we have a handle on those and can predict through the end of the year where we're going to be. And we'll come back with an update with that at a later time if we think there's an issue there. There might be a small issue, but I think it's negligible at this point in time, and we're hoping we can manage it internally. Again, if you look at the regular education line, it's at 28%. We expect that to be lower at this point in time, because again, summer salaries are encumbered through the end of the year, and so, you know, we don't pay some of those out. Same thing with some of the special education costs. Again, the case assessment, we make that in two payments. So we made a lump sum payment, and then we make another lump sum payment later in the year. So it's not, it doesn't quite track on a month-by-month basis. So we're on track, and I don't foresee any huge problems at this point in time. So I'd be glad to answer any questions or provide additional information to school committee if they need that.
Rita, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
You've been here, what, four months now? Five months?
Well, not even five. Go ahead.
All right. How's the, and I'm not asking for a complete thing here, because we'll ask you for that for another school committee meeting.
Okay.
But as we look at this, if 5.8 million is regular ed, 4.9 is special education, and I know there's many things involved in that. How comfortable are you now that you're getting into the district? Expenditures look well based on the needs of the community? Where we need to be, in your opinion?
Well, overall, as a community, 21% of the student body qualifies for special education services. That is relatively high compared to other communities. So that is certainly something I'm trying to understand why that is the status with this community. And I've also spoken with Superintendent Clenchey about two programs that I think we could really look at in order to see where there might be some change in perhaps we, how we deliver those services. And so again, I think I will have more information after I propose what I think will be a program review in those two areas. But I do think that there are certainly, overall, I want to say the caliber of the services are very, very good. I think the caliber of the faculty that I have worked with, again, I'm very impressed by. And again, many, many nice families that I've had the opportunity to meet. But again, from the financial point of view, I do think that there are some things to be looked at. And I think one of the areas certainly that I've tried to really understand is the out-of-district costs. Because again, that's a major area of cost. That and of course personnel are the two major contributing factors to the overall costs of special education.
I'd like to ask Rita, is that, once she's comfortable by about the end of January, this will pretend as concurrents, is you give us that State of the Union speech, so to speak.
Sure.
Is that a paper?
Put a milestone on that objective.
Quick remark on that. And I would love to hear, hear that report. Included in that, could we get a sort of, a couple of theories as to why that 21% might be? So I think the state average is 17% or so.
Right, exactly.
Which puts us almost 20% higher than the state average. Now, that could be, that's probably for a million different reasons, and we're not going to pin down every one.
Right.
But just some...
Sort of just have little meaning.
Alex is being kind when he asks for theories. We're going to ask for reasons.
Make a quick comment?
Sure.
Feelings mutual. A lot of the staff that I've spoken with, a lot of the parents, they're very pleased with how much they work as well.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here.
Superintendent Report.
We'll start off with Chloe's report on her various schools.
But before Chloe speaks, I'd like to congratulate Chloe. Chloe was the recipient of the Ray Grandy Memorial Scholarship from Friends of the Library, correct?
Oh, excellent.
Excellent. It's a new scholarship, and many folks in towns really know Ray Grandy, who passed away this past year. But when it comes to being a friend of the library, I don't know that you're going to find a greater friend than Ray Grandy was to our library, and really to the town as a whole. First of all, it's wonderful that they did this in Ray's memory, and that you are the first recipient of it. It's a great honor for you, so well done.
Yeah, I'm very grateful. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so as far as the school report goes, events, I don't have anything from Shaker Lane. So for Russell Street, on November 19th, Mrs. Strickland's and Mrs. Warden's third-grade classes will decorate the senior center for Thanksgiving for a community service project. And Russell Street would like to thank the PTA for sponsoring Grab and Go Healthy Snacks to, like, which goes along with the Fuel Up to Play 60 philosophy. So every student will get one of those snacks. And then at the middle school, they had a wellness day, which went very well. And they also had a Veterans Day Assembly organized by Mrs. Morgan. And they're running a food drive right now for loaves and fishes, which will, they'll be collecting food from November 4th to the 22nd. They're also sending candy to the troops, extra Halloween candy. Oh, that ended up, never mind, by mistake. And then tomorrow, you can order from sixth grade enterprising people, which is where every sixth grade student has the chance to make their own small business for a day. And a bunch of kids participated in the, as, they were scholar athletes, as recognized by the Central Mass American Youth Football and Cheer Conference. And so it was only 35 students out of almost 4,500 applicants, and six students from Littleton were chosen, which is crazy. And then in the high school, the field hockey team were district finalists and the champions in the league, which is really cool. And a whole bunch of them participated in an All-Star game for Central Mass, which is very impressive. And the football team is in the district finals. The next game is, it's a home game tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And term grades come out tomorrow on the new Aspen system, which everyone's excited about, I think.
Depending on the report, correct?
Just have them do tomorrow. They'll be posted Monday.
Oh.
Yep.
If the dog can't eat the homework, can at least chew on the computer. Thanks, Chloe.
You ready?
Yeah, entertain us.
Entertainment? That's what I'm here for. As you, for some of you are aware, I believe the last technology grant that the state awarded was 1999. Chapter 70 doesn't have a technology section through the funding form though. And if you look at what's happened from 1999 to 2013, technology has become a very active part of what we do every day in schools. One always has to remember, we're not competing within towns, we're competing with the world. And as we shape programs and as we move forward, I think we need to keep that as part of our vision. Any school district needs to keep that as part of their vision. Chairman Vella asked me to prepare a potential cost proposal for implementation of PARC. But before I go over that, I want to make it very clear to you that the purchase of Chromebooks or any computing device goes beyond the administration of the test. What this does is if PARC is organized the way it most likely will be in terms of having students write tests on a class-by-class basis, we need enough computers in each school to house a full class of students. So we're using the number of 130 devices for each of our three schools. At this point in time, PARC will not be administered within the pre-K to 2 grade range. As spoken previously at today's meeting, we do have some Chromebooks in our schools. And having been involved in computerized testing within school districts before, it's imperative that you don't adopt the philosophy of agnostic platforms. Your students need to be running off the same platform, making sure that the computers are cleared of the information that they need to be cleared of. And any deviation from testing protocol can have negative results on student performance. So when we go into these kinds of endeavors, it's important that we're truly ready to do it. Now, you realize that the PARC assessments, when they come out, can be paper and pencil written. I mean, it's not as if systems would have to convert right away. But when you consider what's happening beyond high school, you realize that the ability for our students to write online tests is a skill, a 21st century skill, in my opinion, that should be instilled in our students prior to exiting high school. So for that reason, I'm certainly an advocate of doing it right the first time around, rather than converting over after the fact. It's always harder to convert after you've already established a pattern. That's been my experience as a leader. So when we look at the costs, we would need roughly 240 Chromebooks added to our district in a cartboard fashion, so that they can be easily transported from class to class and have power stations built right into the carts. So that in itself encompasses an $85,000 price tag. Now, you have to realize, and I'm sure you do, that Chromebooks have gained great recognition and validity in a very short period of time. Without the refinement of web-based software, they wouldn't have a lot of use in our schools. The only use they would have is if we downloaded everything to servers and accessed the servers for the information for the Chromebooks. What they're doing, though, is quite interesting. Because when you consider the thousands, tens of thousands of students that will be accessing a test online at the same time with a web-based browser, they're going to have to really truly ensure that they have the right bandwidth, the right software programs to handle that kind of volume. When we input data into our SIMs, we find that it slows down. And we're not, we're not looking at tens of thousands of offices trying to do it at the same time. So I'm sure they've thought of these things, but for me, that's a bit of a caution. I've done online testing before, but at that point in time, we weren't cloud-based, so we were server-based, so we had control over those kinds of things. So I'm going to be watching with interest, so to speak, before they roll this out. If we feel that that could be an issue, then I don't know if we would jump on board right away with online testing. But we'll make that decision as more information comes down the tube. I mean, it's no different than some of the things we're hearing in the news, in terms of people trying to offer or access web-based programs and are finding that they can't get on. So it sounds easier than it actually is to do. And I'm sure Mike can attest to that. The only area of consideration we really need to look at in terms of infrastructure and Wi-Fi would be Russell Street School. We really need to take a look at upgrading the Wi-Fi structure. It's, I believe, a four-to-one setup at this point in time?
Yeah, four classrooms to one hub. Yeah, even probably six.
Six?
One per hallway, one upstairs, one downstairs.
So that definitely would be problematic with the volume. We can take care of bandwidth quite easily, but there are two components when you're in this kind of business. And if you don't take care of them both, you find that you're unsuccessful. You have your switches that you need to take care of. And quite often when we, when schools upgrade Wi-Fi, they take care of the Wi-Fi component and find out that the switches aren't working with the Wi-Fi as well as it could be. And as a result, the volume of computers that you can log on drastically decreases. So we feel that those two areas can be taken care of with a price tag of around $30,000. Now, some of you are, I'm sure, thinking Russell Street isn't that old. But you have to remember that technology has changed so much during the time from when Russell Street was finished to where we are now, that the Wi-Fi structures weren't built for the volume of computers that we're starting to use. So there's been a drastic change in a matter of four years in the way we do business.
At that, Kelly, the Wi-Fi wasn't the big emphasis there. Russell Street repair, call it renovation, by the school authorities dictates, was probably, you know, certainly many things, but HVAC being a big piece of it in the windows. So...
Well, they did put in a Wi-Fi system.
Yeah. But I would say we didn't certainly go to the rigor that we'd like to be doing, as it's a case of reimbursable expenses at the time.
Right.
And PMBC was making some decisions based there. Well, school building committee, that's where it became.
But at the same time, we can't, we can't apply today to decisions that were made four to six years ago. Because I remember parts of the discussion where there was still reluctance about what is the technology introduction rate that should be at that school? And I think we were struggling just to even get the, you know, the smart boards and one computer in each classroom. I mean...
The purpose of my statement is that we're not just four years further along in technology, is that the technology insertion at that time wasn't as robust as we would like to have been. So it's certainly four years hence, but then there's also the baseline was less than we wanted it to be, more than just four years.
But, you know, again, everything's fixable. Just a matter of strategizing and making sure that the money you invest is long-lasting. And I think we have that down. I know we have that down after looking at the middle school and the high school. We have the right recipe, so that's a good thing to be able to tout. Now, with the introduction of a new testing approach, there'll be some professional development required, and teachers are going to have to be proctored, so they're going to have to be trained proctors. We'll do most of that internally, but there will be some release time for subs, et cetera, as a result of that. And it's really important that the staff understand the rules and regulations of administration of testing. If they're violated, there can be very serious consequences, and certainly not intentional violations, but you need to really understand the regulations to make sure that you adhere to them. And they need to understand the design of the online test and how it actually works, so when they work with their students, they can show them through sample questions how to manipulate items, for example, mathematics test question, et cetera. So we've attached an approximate price of about eleven thousand dollars for that to happen. So total cost prediction at this point in time is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Chairman Vella had asked me if, we've had a lot of talk about this around the superintendent's table, and to be quite honest with you, most of our conversations are around educator evaluation, Common Core alignment, and the rapid development of pilot district-determined measures. So I think we're filled with timelines that we need to adhere to, knowing that this is approaching, but the conversations at this point in time haven't focused on technology acquisition around the various tables?
Well, MASC has been having some conversations, for sure, and I don't know about MASs. Mary Jo Rosetti, president of MASC, and certainly other board members, have had the opportunity to speak very directly with Commissioner Chester, Commissioner of Education here in the state. Was it last week, could be two weeks ago, where he stated that it's a two-year pilot plus test, you know, if the, now there's what it really is, and then readdressed it again in 2015. You said it very politely, it's a train. Train's left the station, as far as the state's concerned, and we all better be on board, is pretty much the direction from the state at this point. Now, I can see with the computer bit, you know, do paper testing, you say, but certainly there's the professional development piece of that. And then if we did go down the computer, there's collateral benefits behind those computers that go well beyond the park. So that's good, too, so it's not truly a one-twenty-six K number attached to it.
Right.
But in the short term, somewhere about ten thousand dollars. We're a small district. We know it's going to come from someplace else that we won't do because of that. That remains my concern, and we've pretty much been just, you know, kind of horribly speaking to it. Do you want to do anything as a committee, or just sit back and see how this train ride goes, or, you know, pushback at all?
Well, to perhaps stress the metaphor, I don't think it's within our bounds to stop the train, but I think certainly we can make it easier for us to go along, ask for more support financially to make it more manageable.
There are options about getting off trains, too, not just staying on it. The train's left the station, there's no doubt about it, jumping off is pretty tough.
Especially with something like this, especially with something like Park.
Commonwealth Massachusetts prides itself on local control, okay? And this is not a stake in the ground for local control, it's whether or not we want to put a stake in the ground on the issue itself. If not, you know, I'm okay. But it becomes one more of those mandates, and at what point do you say, you know, death by a thousand cuts, and I'm only up to nine ninety-eight, so I've got another couple to go before I die?
So do a formal letter to...
What do you guys think?
So, you know, so, I mean, the last several meetings, I listened to and I actually understand where they want to go with the Park-style testing. What I'm really having a problem with is the way they're conducting the train, not necessarily moving towards the different test concepts that they want to drive out of, whether they're testing and validating the children or learning at the appropriate material and depth there. I'm just having a problem with this, you will do it this way, you will participate in the pilot, you want, it's marginal benefit to us, the way it's structured now, and then we're starting to see what the true cost of us being able to implement the test is going to be. And I'm not sure what they're doing in return to help us through that transition. And I guess that's where, I would clearly support that, you know, we ought to forward this to our representatives and go, where is this hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars going to come from? You know, we already got a budget that is going to be pushing the town, you know, in terms of what's available within the position two and a half. The last couple of years, we've cut quite a few programs that I think people would like to see some of the educational objectives restored there. I know there's been discussions, you know, community people are looking for, like, when could we bring back perhaps some programs that, you know, doesn't exist, or substitute programs or alternative programs? We need money for that. Or, nope, sorry, community, I need to find a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars out of our budget to do the mandatory testing. I think that's where I'm saying that we ought to be pushing that.
And I take great umbrage at the commissioner's policy and his technique, great umbrage, you know, just be on record, not that he's going to come down here and chastise me if I haven't said that. But if it's truly some sort of pilot slash test program, pick a few, fund them, and then find out how it works, instead of, really, the entire state has to participate. You know, we're three buildings, you know, seventy-five percent of our buildings, and it's what, K through two is not doing it anyway?
Correct.
So Shaquille O'Neal is ineligible. So all of our eligible buildings have to participate. I don't know if every eligible building in Boston's in that sort of position, but gosh dang it, the state could have done a much better job. It's easy to commiserate after the fact. Thing is, is there anything we want to do now? Is it the, you know, concern of the committee written to Senator Eldredge and Representative Osiero, written to the commissioner? And you spoke to it at the MASC meeting, it came up as a resolution. So certainly, the committee that represents school committees is taking it up and running with the banner.
MASs has also submitted a letter, but it wasn't specific to Park testing, it was specific to all the initiatives that we're trying to do at once.
And the Adebau to the Common Core alignment.
It's about balance and effectiveness and efficiency.
I mean, certainly, some school committees in the state have enacted a reform, or passed a resolution, as far as the Park testing goes. And maybe this one, we remain on the train, and we're not going to stop it, but do we establish some sort of way forward that the next time, we're better prepared, maybe that's not the greatest idea, but we're more willing to deal with it earlier on in the process?
What do you mean by, some school committees have passed a resolution, as a sort of, just a statement, or?
You know, whereas, wherefore, therefore, and then voted on it.
I agree with a lot of Daryl's points. I don't have an issue with, conceptually, moving from MCAS to Park, similar with a lot of the other programs from the Adebau. I think that's an improvement in terms of policy, but the way it's being implemented is not reasonable in terms of its burden on every district in the Commonwealth. So I would certainly think we could pursue the option of writing to our legislators and certainly someone at the ESE, the commissioner, saying, hey, we need the money. I think that's something that we could certainly do.
So there's one thing is, ask for money, and the other is, short of funding, we will not participate. Two ends of the spectrum, well, two ends of the spectrum, do nothing, no money, don't participate, and then in between someplace, ask for money.
Remember, you can have pen and paper tests, but that is an option.
We still have some professional development yet.
Right, but I'm just saying that there is a natural comeback built in to this thing, and you have to word your letter very carefully.
Oh, I would not use a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar number, that's a bogus number for this issue.
I think the bigger issue, in my opinion, is the fact that they've promoted technology for thirteen years and have not secured a grant to help schools implement technology. That would be a bigger issue, as far as I'm concerned.
You guys are in favor, take inputs, and I'll get with Kelly, we'll draft something, and if not next week, our first December meeting?
I would feel more comfortable not looking at the, well, certainly I want to explore more the option of not participating, because that's sort of a lose-lose situation, because we...
You don't have the option.
Right, we don't have the option.
Legally.
Moving to the paper tests.
It's law.
According to legal counsel, it is law. And the Department of Education has the legal right to implement a variety of things, including testing. I hate to be the bearer of that.
No, no, and I understand well that executive departments and executive policies and regulations have full effect of force of law when it's based on good law, now that it's good law that's passed.
It is passed.
Well, there's certainly, and I'm going to get a legal issue.
And I'm just saying this as a cautionary note.
Because I would want our, however we engage, and I guess I'm in favor of us engaging our representatives and directly to the ESE, but I think we need to make sure that we're going to get at least some kind of, being obstinate about it isn't going to get us anything.
The purpose is not to be obstinate. What do we want out of this?
Right.
And that becomes the purpose.
I mean, I don't think any of you are opposed to introducing online testing. I think you probably agree that it's a skill that our students need. The challenge is, how do we do it in a cost-effective manner?
I think that, to me, that's, what I'm looking for is an acknowledgement from the parties that we would be addressing, that the process was flawed, we, you know, realized that, and that the, and it's, you know, the Park aspect of it could just be part of it, because it's the introduction of other concepts of, you know, whether you want to phrase it as unfunded mandates, or a lack of balance, a rush to implementation, you know, without concern for how it affects, you know, us down in the trenches, and admin, and staff, and families, et cetera. You know, just acknowledgement that, you know, we understand that we are impacting you dramatically, we think this is worthwhile, you know, but we can try to tweak the process along those lines, I think it's about the best we're going to hope for. But, and that's not meaningless, I mean, that is meaningful, if you can get that kind of acknowledgement, that'll mean something. And I don't think that just, I know we're not the only ones having this discussion, and I know that there are school committees that have taken action, but also there are also larger entities, MASC, MASs, Suburban Coalition, et cetera, you know, so they're getting an earful, there's no question about it. I think we should lend our voice to that kickoff, because I think it'll be a little out.
Do you want to throw some topic sentences at us, and we'll work something out?
No, I think you're pretty good at it, you go ahead.
Quizzes. Quizzle docs. Kelly, you okay with that, buddy?
I am. Google Docs.
Hey, I'm just saying, I don't feel the need to.
Just kidding, I just want to chime in, I'm not...
No, I like the little list of things that you ticked off there.
Yeah, we can certainly put something together.
Made this old man happy, thank you. All right, now you want to talk about Common Core?
I don't know if I do now, but...
You give him another windmill until that, that's why he's happy.
Just like I need a shield before I go into this one.
Just, so, during the field testing here, are there ways we're going to get feedback other than, the state's going to be happy that they got their sample size for the test of scores we're not going to get back?
Okay.
There. There are, are we going to have our observers, so to speak, in the classrooms to understand what's, how's the students working with this? Is the screen size adequate there, you know? At some point, is seven inches, you know, diagonal really sufficient for all grade levels? What are we going to do for observers and get something valuable back for ourselves?
Just to be clear, we're not, as your superintendent, I'm not going to be promoting online testing for the pilot. I don't think it's fair to our students at this point in time. So the advantage it will give us is we will have real items to take a look at. When our students are writing these exams, we'll be able to have a conversation with students in terms of their interpretation of the complexity of the exam, where some of the difficulties were, and where some of the strengths were. So to me, it does give us an advantage being a pilot site. I know there are a lot of disadvantages, but if we're going to be judged on the results of an assessment, with, whether we like it or not, so there are consequences if we underperform, it's nice to have a competitive edge in terms of looking at the design of the assessment. And please remember that this goes hand in hand with the adoption of Common Core. So it's a reaffirmation of our curriculum design as we move forward.
Nice segue.
Thank you.
Go ahead, proceed, please.
Was that helpful, Daryl?
Yeah, so we're not going to do the online, are we going to opt out of that?
No, you know, if somebody, Daryl, if somebody comes to me, and, for example, the middle school, and they feel that their grade eight ELA class is proficient enough to try it, I'm not going to block it, I mean, they'll just have to convince me that, you know, they follow certain protocols to feel competent, that they're ready to do it.
I guess, you know, I'm glad to hear you're going to do some, I use the term observer, observations, understand how the paper process will work. If we do participate in any electronic one, making sure we get the same kind of feedback so that we can understand, you know, is there, you know, they'll have their results, but we need to understand how the children and the students, you know, interact with the device during the online testing. You know, is it too cumbersome? You know, was it designed for landscape screens versus horizontal screens?
So if possible, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a pilot class do online, but I just want to make sure that we're ready if we go in that direction.
I just also want to make sure we get as much locality out of it as the state's going to try to be getting out of it.
Good point.
Thank you.
Common Core, as we go through the costs today, it's important to remember that in a lot of, I'm not going to say in an ideal world, but typically past practice for many, many years in the field of education is to review resources on a five-year cycle. We haven't had that luxury. So when I go through these costs, some of these costs can be directly tagged for the implementation of the Common Core, but you also have to remember that we would have had to do some of this anyway, because the life expectancy just of a textbook is about five years. Now then you make a decision at the end of the five-year period, is the material still what you need, and if so, you may rebind some of the textbooks. That's true with some of our courses, certainly not true for biology. So, but the important message I'm trying to deliver is that systems that strive to be the best are reviewing their curriculum and resources often, and we're moving in that direction because we want to be the best. So some of this would happen despite the Common Core, it just happens to be tied into the Common Core as we move forward. So if we look at mathematics, elementary, K-5, everyday math series, 2012 upgrade, ten thousand, I believe the last upgrade was in nineteen ninety-six, so certainly within that range. When we purchase new textbooks, we also purchase the electronic suite, which is very beneficial in terms of old-school interaction, and that has a price tag of six thousand dollars a year to continue the license from year to year. Training on the 2011 math frameworks, we did internally, using Train the Trainer model. We've been doing that quite a bit in the past three years and has saved a tremendous amount of money, and it's nice to have the expertise developed internally rather than pulling from the outside all the time. Secondary level, six to twelve, thirty-five thousand dollars expended on Glencoe McGraw-Hill. And Jerry Lind, I thought there was an electronic suite with that also?
There is an electronic suite, it's a textbook that has the electronic capability.
So it's different? So, it's different, then?
So, that's within that $35,000 adoption.
Substitute costs for curriculum mapping since the inception of the Common Core, about $3,000. ELA, K to 12, employing of consultants to help with the new standards, $2,500, $3,000 for substitute costs. Some of this money came out of title funds, actually the majority of it did in this case. During the current year, we're focusing on a K-12 literacy project, and the money that's already been spoken for is being used for that. We're also using Train the Trainer model along with the consultant. Twenty thousand dollar consultant fees, and $5,000 for substitute costs, and most of that money, again, was title money that we used to make this happen. Total summary of costs, mathematics, textbook adoptions, 45,000. K-5 technology, e-technology from year to year, 6,000. Substitute costs to date for mapping and specific training, 3,000 to 5,000. Consulting fees for ELA literacy, $20,000 a year for 14 and 15. Planned adoption of K-5 reading and writing series program, we're in the process of looking at a new program. We would have had to do that despite the Common Core, and we're looking anywhere from 60 to 8,000 dollar price tag. My request to the curriculum folks would be to phase that in over a two-year period, start with pre-K to two, and then subsequent year, focus on three to five. The last revamp of ELA, Jerry Lynn, was nineteen...
Last revamp of ELA was the purchase in August of 2006. Dr. Livingston purchased, and Nancy Gustafson arranged for the purchase, tried the 2007 project, before Dr. Venus got in.
So, obviously, there are price tags attached to moving forward in certain areas, and with the temperament that we would have to do some of this anyway.
Any questions? Yeah, so this one, I guess maybe I'm a little confused. This one wasn't quite as crisp as I thought. So, we would have to be doing curriculum upgrades anyway. You know, even the writing piece there, I think the clear recommendation independent of Common Core is, is we need to beef that up. So, when you say 60 to 80,000, is that a delta cost of Common Core, or is that just how much our curriculum upgrades are going to cost?
K to five, that would be the price tag for the upgrade itself, with the resources.
That we, independent of Common Core, would need to be doing, I guess. That's a little ambiguous in the...
Right. To make it clear, irregardless of Common Core, we would be looking at a new ELE program moving forward. We just feel that the program that we have is above mediocre, but it's not where we want it to be. Right now, we're supplementing and doing fine, but that's not a long-term resolution. Does that help?
So, is the implementation of Common Core then, you know, there are some additive costs, but it doesn't look like it's overly significant, I mean, you know, there's some.
Right.
Is it more along the lines of the timeline and the methodology that it's causing a little bit of duress?
I think you've hit that head on. There are some realignment of concepts, which, you know, isn't that big of a deal. The biggest change is the difference in pedagogy that's required to hit that high application level. And it requires teacher training, it requires different resources, and different assessment tools. So, those are the three things. What the ELA resources would do is it would give you that toolbox so that the teachers could actualize the framework and hit the spectrum of basic learning concepts to higher-end application.
And what we feel is the potential positive, is there a significant positive impact by virtue of going through this in this manner?
Specific to ELA?
I mean, like, since I've been on the school committee, I've heard a lot of talk about integration, curriculum mapping, et cetera, et cetera. It seems that this is not a new concept, and then all of a sudden, the Common Core kind of sits on top of it. What we were kind of already doing anyway, so are we going to be doing a better job at it, or are we going to be doing a different job at it? And by virtue of yes or no those questions, it was yes. What are we getting out of it that we weren't otherwise going to get that makes it worthwhile to, because I don't think we've had that discussion yet.
Yeah, and that's a good question. In terms of ELA specific, we're just moving from 30% informational text to 50%. I mean, it wasn't as big of a change as people were telling. The difference is the expectation of analyzing and synthesizing writing, it's more of an analytical approach to writing. For many, many years, I don't know if some of you are educated with whole language, probably Alex was, and it was, informational writing was pretty well nonexistent. You sat down and you wrote about a flower you saw, or a hockey game you watched, there was no higher analytical component required. So, you go to college, the first thing you have to do is figure out how to decipher informational text and extrapolate from that point. So, they're moving more into the public education component through teaching of those skillsets. Mathematics, you know, there are some conceptual changes where things that were taught in grade nine are now taught in grade seven. And I'm okay with that, providing students are cognitively ready, or sometimes I question people's judgment in that area. But, in mathematics, I gave you an example, I believe, last meeting, where if you were teaching the area of irregular polygons, quite often you would run off some irregular polygons, and kids would sit in groups and try to figure out the geometric shapes and figure out the area. Well, that's an application skill level, but it's not like handing them a house plan that's geometrically irregular, and having them figure out the area, then having them figure out how much paint they're going to need to paint the house, how much siding they're going to need to side the house, or brick. So, it creates a higher level of application. You know, having, being a math minor, and I taught math for a number of years, problem-solving was the hardest thing to get kids excited in. And part of it was the approach. I mean, if you hand out a piece of paper to a student, say you have five minutes to answer this, and there's 10 steps, well, how motivating is that? To me, it's not motivating. So, you know, even back when I was teaching math, we used to do different things. We used to do problem-solving posters, you know, they could create some arts and working groups, and tie it to something that they loved to do, and all of a sudden, problem-solving became fun. Man, imagine that. And what the new Common Core is saying is, let's develop life links. Let's develop opportunities for students to explore things that they're going to experience now or later on, or they would like to explore. I think that's the major difference. I've seen so many curriculum changes in my career, I cringe at times, and without knowing every single standard at this point in time, I haven't seen anything that alarms me. And I haven't in certain areas, and I haven't here. I mean, I think the standards are doable, nothing that tells me to this point in time that they're not cognitively suited for the grade level. So, you know, I'm feeling good about this. Massachusetts already had good standards, but like anybody else in this day and age, we're thinking beyond Massachusetts, and trying to establish what our children need to be successful globally. And I think that's the major shift.
Thank you.
We did do props on them, by the way, Train A leaves Station A.
On the same track.
On the same track.
Which we're most certainly not off of.
Mike presented the question well, better or different. Has the state, DESE, and/or the US Department of Education provided us with an analysis of standards, and side by side saying that the new Common Core standard, not that it exceeds or needs or whatever, but that there's an expected improvement in performance, or learning, perhaps a better word, based on some sort of analysis? Does that exist, Kelly?
I have not seen it. Jerry Lynn, have you?
Well, it wouldn't come from the federal.
Where's the Common Core come from?
Common Core, when you hear the phrase "so-called federal standards," Common Core comes from a group of governors and commissioners of states that came together. In the end, there's now 47 states and the District of Columbia that have adopted those standards, so they're common. What the analysis of the standards or writing of the standards that has come?
Can I stop you with a question right there first? Is any of that coming down to the states without DOE approval?
Yes.
US DOE?
It's not a federal US DOE initiative.
May not be their initiative, but is anything happening at that scale, across the entire country, minus three states, that the Department of Education is not involved in? I don't mean that as a rhetorical question.
I explained, this is the way that I'm explaining it. The states, you saw there's a process in Massachusetts where Massachusetts had to decide whether to adopt the Common Core or not in the rewriting of the 2011 frameworks. And in that rewriting, in the course of adopting the Common Core, each state could add portions of their own standards to make it different from what the Common Core was set out. And Massachusetts looked at their standards and their frameworks that were there before, and they said, the Common Core doesn't hit every marker. And so, there was about 15% of things that were different in Massachusetts, that Massachusetts felt we had good standards before, we were always top, a lot of the Common Core was based on Massachusetts. And Massachusetts said, we want to maintain the rigor that we have, and they added about 15% of standards that are different from that common set, if you will. It's an echo of the debate that's going on in the state now about adopting PARC until it is proven to be better than MCAS. There was a big debate about rigor in Massachusetts, because we didn't want to give up the rigorous Massachusetts frameworks, because unlike other states, what there were studies side to side, is there were studies as to whether the Common Core standards were as rigorous as the current standards in other states. And many states, the Common Core was more rigorous. Massachusetts folks was worried about the lack of rigor, and echoed what we hear in this town and the state often.
Certainly, when every child in the United States do well, you know, our responsibility is right here in Littleton.
I understand that, and what I'm addressing is Massachusetts came from the perspective of rigorous academic performance on national tests, and taking learning standards seriously so that there's truth in advertising. When Massachusetts said your students are achieving proficiency, it meant proficiency. It wasn't a watered-down test. Other states, those students demonstrated proficiency on their tests, but they did not do well, and it was not as rigorous as the Common Core. This is in my judgment, and I could also give you some examples of those maps of the United States where there was that difference in rigor, and I could outline for you how Massachusetts standards 2011 frameworks go above and beyond the Common Core.
But, and it was, that was tied to No Child Left Behind. This is an exciting conversation for me, and it's interesting. First of all, folks, they're standards, it's not curriculum, it's not a standardized curriculum. So, there's still wiggle room to tailor the curriculum to the needs of the children.
Because we've been using the word synonymously, excuse me, synonymously, even this evening, where we've been talking curriculum and the standard, and thanks for clarifying that.
It is different. But what you need to know, and it doesn't annoy me, but it bothers me to, we don't do things that different internationally. I mean, I've had the luxury of traveling around. I could go into a class in Vancouver, British Columbia, a grade eight math class, and there's a 90% chance that they're going to be taking the same, teaching the same information as if I went to Florida or California. The resources would be the same. It's not as if each state has their own resources. Those resources are international. So, you know, I look at this as a, as an attempt, and maybe a stronger word than attempt, to monopolize on everything that we're currently doing, but what we really are trying to focus on is making sure that our students have the mastery and the ability to apply the concepts to the degree they need to be successful. And having a broader-based test isn't a bad idea. Now, if you leave the standards out, the concept of a broader-based test is not a bad idea if it's marked to the same variables. And I'm quite amazed that there's been such a large undertaking. I mean, this has been in the works internationally for 25 years, and it's failed. People have played the game, but when it came down to jumping on the final train, they didn't. So, I do see this as an opportunity nationally. I really, you know, as an educator, philosophically, I don't want personally a student in California to have a different education than a student in Massachusetts, in terms of being educated well enough to move forward in the career that they choose. And when I first started teaching a number of years ago, we had no standardized exams. People were happy. But, the cold reality of this is that a student in high school X may have been getting a good education. A student in high school Y may have been getting an education on one topic that a teacher loved. And to me, that was such a disservice to educating the children of the nation. So, they went to grade 12 exit exams, and it was really interesting. When that first phase was brought in, it was brought in in the 80s, and it was a telltale sign, and it really improved the quality of instruction very, very quickly. So, I'm not, philosophically, I'm not a firm believer in just do what you want. There needs to be some standard that our kids need to be successful. Teachers graduate, they have a good understanding of pedagogy, but they're not curriculum designers. They're not assessment designers. You know, they learn how to do that as they become more experienced. But the focus of a teaching college with a bachelor's degree is to learn the content and learn how to teach, the delivery of instruction.
I want to make a broad question. Can it be this committee's expectation, surely this person's expectation, as a result of instituting the Common Core in Littleton Public Schools? We would have made changes anyway, and it would have cost something. And whether the Common Core costs another $10 or another $1,000 is not the issue, but in the end game, that standard to standard matched up, we've at the very least maintained ground, but more importantly, we will have gained ground?
We will gain ground.
I feel very strongly that we'll gain ground.
It's our commitment. To kind of force our hand.
Oh, you're saying the Common Core is forced. So, if we were already number one in the nation as a state, this is why, I trust you guys implicitly, you know that, but certainly, you know, on anybody's word, there's still, you know... But certainly, you know, on anybody's word, there's still, you know, why am I missing this? I guess maybe that's the best way to say it. Why do I not understand it well? And you're not going to take the rest of the night to do that for me, because I'd be wasting your all's time.
But here's a simple explanation. We're number one in the state as compared to what? Compared to what?
I know it's standardized testing, and that's about the best you can do.
You know, even if we use NAEP as one test, we would truly be number one in the United States of America if that same test was given to every student in every state and we scored the best. That's why I hear these things, and I go, "What does that mean? We're number one. Did anybody else write the test?" You know, those are the things that I think we have to be cautious of. We want the best that we can give our children in terms of education. And I think the Common Core will help us get there. It's not the magic recipe, but I think it brings about a greater consciousness of the need to go beyond the concept. The concept is only part of learning.
Yeah, no, so I was going to say is, it's almost mundane. Change of the title of this memo in terms of, these are our curriculum refinement costs for the next year, year and a half, whatever. Because based on what I'm hearing, we are going to refine our curriculum anyway. We cannot have a static six-year-old curriculum and keep moving forward and think that we're going to keep pace with all of the things there. So the Common Core is almost a red herring in part of this presentation here. Because if the Common Core didn't occur, we'd still be doing this whole list.
Under my leadership, yes.
Right. As a high-performing district. And I think what Mike asked the question, we need to probably also be able to articulate what are the improvements we're going to get from this. Because I think that's the question people are going to ask us. You're going to go through all of this, and how do you know it's better? And alignment to Common Core isn't going to be the answer back to the people asking that question. And I think that's where we need to keep our focus on. And I would almost just like to delete the word "Common Core" out of it because it's the red herring.
And I would also mention that in terms of introducing these new programs and changes, it's a question of explaining what the benefit is, but it's also a question of educating the families, what's going to be required of the children and the rest of the family to be able to take full advantage of these types of implementations. And if we shirk that part of it, we do it at our own peril and obviously at the kid's peril, too.
Can I just say one thing? We did tonight, Mr. Vazinlo and I had a Title I parent night. And at the recent Administrative Council meeting, we met with Littleton PTA officials. And an important theme in that is talking about what the Common Core means for kids at each grade level in terms of the skills and knowledge that they're asking. And we have been sharing and highlighting resources, some from the National PTA that are outstanding, that were shared at the state curriculum summit. And we have plans to do that in a number of different parent venues.
I would add two things. Not only are the standards improved in what's expected of students with Common Core versus the previous Massachusetts frameworks, but the way students demonstrate that is also changed. So it's, and please butt in and correct me if you want to correct me, but students will be focusing less on the, sort of to the Gettysburg Address example earlier, less on the dates and names and more on the themes and the critical thinking than they were before. And secondly, although the Common Core standards was led by the NGA and the Chief Counsel for, what is it, the National Council for State Chief Officers in Education, there was a lot of federal money available that would reward states for moving in that direction through Race to the Top, which, as you know, is through ARRA. So I remember in, I believe it was summer of 2010, 2011 maybe, when the state adopted this, there was a conversation about, well, it will be an improvement, but the reason we want to act now is because if we do so, we would be more eligible for a Race to the Top grant as a state. And we got in about $250 million as a state for that. And we were rewarded for that, and we came out with the grant. So it's not led by U.S. DOE, but they're certainly, you know, encouraging it, or were when they had the funds.
All right. Let's not belabor it too much. We all know it's going to be different. So far, the analysis hasn't been presented as to why it's different other than, well, critical thinking. So here's what I'd like to, I'd like to commend you all for your unwavering steadfastness in this somewhat interrogation. Thank you.
It was fun.
Do it more often, do it next week.
Yes, next week.
All right. We've still got a couple more things there, Superintendent.
All right. But again, great questions, and we need to have these discussions.
The education evaluation update?
To date, where we're at is we've, we have all of our teachers by November fifteenth ready to hand in their goals for the year. We've trained the teachers on Teach Point. We finalized all of our forms. They've uploaded their self-evaluation and goals. They're starting to upload evidence for the thirteen areas or elements that have been identified. And we've developed proficiency using those tools. And I guess more importantly, I think we've developed proficiency in understanding the rubric of the new educator evaluation model. So we're in a very good spot. And again, that doesn't happen without a wild coin process that's collaboratively based. And I want to commend all of our administrators and teachers that have been involved in that process, a long haul over a year. But we're in good shape, and I see a lot of excitement rather than moaning and groaning. And I think we have excitement because what we've said from day one is we want this to help you become better at what you do. And we need to do that together. So that would be the update on educator evaluation. After the fifteenth, our principals, well, some of them already started, but most of them will be getting into the classrooms doing informal and formal visitations.
What was that date then?
After November fifteenth. But some, what we've done, we've said to the staff, if you're ready to have administrators come in, that's fine. We'll start yesterday. We just wanted to make sure that we gave them sufficient time to be ready. Questions on that? Coordinated program review. PJ, you had asked me to do a very brief overview of the comprehensive program review, so I'm going to turn that over to Rita. Go ahead.
Okay, this will be brief because we are really just in the beginning of this process. But every six years, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education conducts a comprehensive coordinated program review in each school district, and this year is our turn to do that. The rationale for the review is that it fosters the continual improvement of our programs and our services in a variety of areas. The primary focus of the review is on compliance with required policies and procedures and programs in three broad areas. One is special education, and there are sixty different criteria that they could potentially review. In the area of civil rights, there are twenty-five criteria. And in the area of English language learners, there are twenty criteria. So it's quite extensive. And the department selects most, but not all, of the different criteria to review during the coordinated program review. There's a secondary focus on fiscal procedures. It's not an audit, but they do want to look at the procedures of the district in that area. The department uses a variety of methods to conduct their review. There's a self-assessment, and that was done last year by Diana. And they had to submit a lot of the documentation in the areas of special education and civil rights. There's also an onsite visit, and that happens in March, March tenth to the fourteenth. It's a week long. It involves a lot of scheduling. There will be a review of student records. They interview staff. They interview the CPAC, and the CPAC is the Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. There's a survey of students, a survey of parents, rather, of students with disabilities. They observe classrooms, and they tour our facilities, again, looking at all of the sources of information that helped them gauge our compliance relative to all those criteria. Immediately following that site visit, then on March fourteenth, there is an initial informal exit meeting that happens with Superintendent Clenchey and whomever he chooses to also invite. Let's see, sixty working days after their visit, they will issue a final report. And that final report is posted on the department's website, and it also needs to be disseminated to the public. It has to be disseminated to the school committee. So again, I'll come back with a full report. If sixty days is, you know, sixty days from March, that would happen sometime in the summer, but I imagine that, again, if the school committee is not in session, they will do it as soon as the school committee is back in session. So that gets disseminated to the school committee, to the school administration, and then also to the CPAC. The report gives a rating and a narrative statement for each of the different criteria, and it gauges our level of compliance. And we receive a rating of whether it is commendable, implemented, partially implemented, not implemented, or not applicable. When the Littleton Public School District went through this coordinated program review six years ago, the department noted significant areas of noncompliance. There were fifty-seven criteria that were only partially implemented, and there were two areas that were not implemented at all. That's rather high, but again, I know that from listening to people, there was certainly there's been a change since then, and certainly an improvement, I believe, in the way the district has conducted their programs, and I certainly see that coming in. Again, having been in a variety of districts, being able to compare Littleton to them, Littleton ranks fairly well, I'd say. There certainly are some areas that are more challenging for us. English language learners is one area because we have very few students who really fall into that category, and we still have to comply with all of the requirements. But I do hope that through the efforts of Diana Peterson, and I want to compliment her, although she's not here, she did a lot of work on this already, and myself, that we hopefully will have a more favorable report. Once we receive the report, we have twenty business days to craft and submit a corrective plan for the criteria that received ratings of partially implemented or not implemented. And the department has to approve this plan, but then they also offer technical assistance on the content and the requirements of the plan. And then after our report is submitted and approved, we have one year to demonstrate effective resolution towards any area of noncompliance. And the district continues to follow, or rather, the department continues to follow districts. And even when we are done with a coordinated program review, in a mid-cycle, which is three years after the big review, there will be a less extensive review that we also are subject to.
And just a point of clarification, the review that was done pre-Diana, the, for lack of a better word, deficiencies that were identified were corrected, amended. So I'm looking forward to actually seeing this to completion because we've made significant changes since Diana's time.
And it does require quite a lot of work on the part of many people in the district, but at least we do get a fairly extensive and in-depth report. That does really help with programming because these areas are areas that, some of them are more significant than others, but they're all important or they wouldn't be there.
Questions? Rita?
Okay.
Would you do us a favor, please? Mike and I can probably find our copy from six years ago.
Oh, yes.
But the other jacks weren't on the committee yet.
Right.
Would you mind forward us copies?
Definitely.
In a convenient manner, it's not a drop dish, obviously. Just, you know, we have that background, and see, because we know we've come forward on that.
Definitely.
And Diana clearing up the deficiencies, there's been a heck of a lot of work she'd put into that. Mike and I will just chat.
The district's gone through a tremendous transition in terms of central office personnel.
Definitely.
It was bad timing. There was no question about it. So Diana dearly did a good job. I feel like it's going to be a totally different experience for the district this time around.
I think it will. It's very difficult to meet all criteria, I'll be honest with you, because again, you know, they, every single student record can get reviewed, and that's challenging when you have a lot of the records that we have. But I certainly think it will be better. And the last report is available on the website, so it's very easy to forward to you.
Just one quick question. You went through and listed the number of criteria in each category. What's the total number?
Oh, it was sixty, let's see, twenty-five, eighty, about a hundred and five. But they don't review all of them. They will select them. So when we got that last report, and let's say there were fifty-nine that were not in compliance, that's probably about, I'd say, three-quarters that were probably reviewed.
That's helpful. And is this connected with the program quality assurance, or is that a whole separate?
It's under that umbrella of program quality assurance.
But other programs won't be evaluated in this process, but in future days?
Yes, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging.
And just so you know, we're up to bat for a Title I review also.
Okay, wonderful. Real quick on that, when do we expect to hear anything on high school accreditation?
We have a report that was submitted last week, and we need to arrange a time for John to present it. And as soon as I get an electronic copy, I can forward it to the school committee.
I have hard copies for you all that have been printed, so I'll bring them at the next meeting, if that's all right?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could bring them for next meeting, that would be great. We still don't have an electronic copy?
We do have electronic copy as well, but I had bound copies prepared for the school committee.
Oh, okay.
Just special, it's part of the protocol typically. And the other thing, we're waiting a word, one letter from the director of NEASC, just with some final issued instructions.
Could you at least say whether or not we retain our accreditation?
It's interesting. We received.
We're down.
Yes, we did.
All right. My gosh. By the way, the paper's done.
You made my heart jump when you say that. Come on, man.
Well, they haven't officially told us.
That's that final letter.
That's why I haven't said anything to you yet because I'm waiting for this letter. So I'm going on a limb.
When we get everything, when everything is sort of settled with the NEASC report, can we make a point to put that on the website, not just within the packet, but maybe in the public documents?
We will, but I would, I would rather do a presentation of the school committee before we put it on the website, to do it justice.
Sure.
There's a whole roll-up procedure that they give us that we follow.
Yeah.
Because I could see John's trepidation, keep the electronic copy. Broad data, dangerous in those hands.
It's required that we share and put it on our website.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, BBMC, excuse me, interested citizens.
Bob O'Neil Coleman Link, a couple comments. One, the parents are all excited about Aspen, so it'd be nice to see that rolled out. And I know you're going to emphasize with the teachers to use it to their fullest capability, but the parents will be watching that. Even the system we had last year did wonders for mid-course correction. There's a lot of the data there that you can see, but not all the teachers were using it. They were just, they were putting the final grade in at the end of term. And so we encourage, from a parent's point of view, I encourage them to put in all the steps along the way, because we can help our students, our children, make those course corrections. Secondly, in regard to this discussion on PARC online, and we do have students in the district on IEPs or 504s where it's written in there that they use technology for their testing, for their writing. So if there's an option to opt in, I know it's a big expense, District Y, but for some students in particular, doing that sort of testing online would be beneficial. So just keep that in mind.
And to be clear on that, we would not be able to go against the IP anyway.
Correct. It has to be an accommodation that's written into the IP, and then you have to offer it.
Thanks for bringing it up. Okay. Any others? Anything else? PMBC, anything?
Yep, as you all know...
As you all know, this is more for the public. Next week, we'll be having Ed Begley with EMG, the consulting firm and the firm that conducted the townwide facility study. We'll be having that meeting with PMBC, also VOS and PINCOM representatives. Hopefully, we'll have a full house for that, and we'll go through the study that we've had conducted and talk about how we can use it in future planning purposes. The PMBC has been talking about it for quite some time since we've had our hands on it. We're still exploring it. It should be very good to have Ed back up here. We had him a couple months ago just for a PMBC meeting. It'll also be nice because this will allow the whole town to sort of experience this sort of process that the PMBC has had in terms of understanding the material presented to us and how we can use it. EMG did come up with some of their own priorities for different changes, different things that we want to, we'll need to budget for. PMBC has discussed this and have said, well, EMG's opinion here is coming in with one perspective, but surely those of us who actually live in the town and work with the facilities and our professional staff who manage to have all the things, so it's sort of a feedback for us to take. But when you see the priorities there, those aren't, those are EMG's perspectives, not the perspective of PMBC or any other group. Should be good. We had, when we had Ed up here a couple months ago, it was pretty, pretty good, pretty conformative. The other thing I would note is that we finally got a tree in there, or we're moving with a track. We're having some issues in terms of where to put it, but it's finally there, so.
There was a tree recognition of Ron Catella.
Yeah. And I want to thank, I want to thank Steve in particular for being very involved in that and helping us figure out some of the issues, making it all come together, so thank you.
Steve's an I-bro. Upset. That it?
Yeah.
Budget?
We have the budget summit on Saturday where I will represent the school committee along with all the other town departments as we kind of set the tone for the process going forward. The budget subcommittee's been meeting regularly. We've had a couple Tuesday morning meetings. We'll be meeting every other Tuesday basically as we go through the budget process and meet more frequently if we need to. We will have preliminary numbers going out on Saturday. It's part of that discussion, and then we'll talk about them again at this forum on next Thursday. We're pretty close to having the final numbers. A few more expense items that need to be looked at. Should be all set to go, move the process forward. Oh, can I just ask the, I did not get the agenda. Those documents didn't go through for Saturday's meeting, so if we could just forward those one more time. Thank you.
Is anybody wants to go, Mike?
I don't have the agenda. I didn't get the documents. I'm going at 11:00. I've been told to be there at 11:00.
Crack of 11:00.
Yes. Crack of 11:00.
It's like nine to two is the whole day.
I'll make sure I have it, and you get it.
Thank you. I'm going to come by anyway because I just got to get compliments.
You need to be there on Saturday?
No. I'll be by the office tomorrow just to grab some documentation.
Kelly, you'll call if you want to release any of the EASC policies.
Oh, sure. If you can handle it and not go through the 50 policies with us and be okay with that, you're.
He's in his staff. Damn. You'll get scammed. Scott, before you run off, what's happening tomorrow at 12:30?
Starbase. Kelly and I are headed to Starbase. I think Alex is going in the morning. Kelly and I are headed in the afternoon. Ms. Turp's class will graduate from Starbase tomorrow.
They'll be there.
PJ's going to enjoy. Oh, you'll be there as well? Great.
Excellent. Is that the fourth class?
It is. I think, yeah, there's at least one more, if not two more. The last, I feel like the last class is around the 24th or 25th, so there's at least one more that finished.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Rita.
So the ones that stay.
We can add some.
Can I have puzzles? Steve, if you could flip to further in the packet where it's the policy summary and.
Just my record is saying I'm more of a chocolate guy.
Twizzlers were two for $4, so I got Twizzlers for the next meeting too, so.
John, I'm going to have to take a data.
Dark chocolate really is my ideal.
Yo, what are you looking for, the list?
Yeah, keep going back. You're like within a page here. Keep going, just a little further. There we go. Now make, yeah, make it so we can see.
Yeah, I'm having it right now.
All right.
Is that what you need?
Yeah, we'll start there. So, so you saw that I proposed a goal of streamlining school committee operations and what I thought I would try a little different this time. This was a, about a 200-page reading packet there that we distributed a week early to all the committee members for them to review the packet and identify policies that they thought needed further discussion at this meeting here versus, so that we wouldn't have to spend the time physically going through the ones that are going to probably be a routine approval here. In examining my email, one policy was tagged that people would like a little bit more discussion on, on why we were recommending to rescind it. And what follows in the packet here, and I guess what I will not do is not read it to you tonight because I think everybody did their read-ahead assignment here, but for the public, the summaries here so that everybody can understand what types of changes or edits we were making to the, to the policies here. So the only policy that was identified to me that wanted a little further discussion, I need to wait for the chair since he's the one that identified the policy.
Always one, right? Charge on, Darrell. Charge on.
His policy, oh, there he is. His policy GDI. Right. Policy GDI is, supports, right, supports staff probation. So let me just put a little background on this policy here. So if you could, maybe just scroll down to it just so that we're all on same.
Which one, I apologize?
GDI. GDI supports staff probation.
They are alphabeticals.
Oh, BI. Okay.
Is it BI or DI?
D.
DI. It's alphabet soup here tonight.
You got it.
Yeah. All right. So policy GDI supports staff probation. And by policy in our policy manual, we say that all promotions of non-contract, non-bargaining unit employees and hires are subject to a probationary period before their position is final. That policy is no longer present in the MAS C series of recommendations, so I, and then I was looking at it a little bit more, and I'm not a labor law expert, but in Massachusetts, all of our non-contract and non-bargaining unit people are employee-at-will employees anyway. So we already have the authority to do that, so we don't need a policy that directs the superintendent in that way. So that was the reasoning behind pulling it out of our policy manual there. And if there's any further discussion on that, I can either shoot it back and research it more or not.
That's in depth.
For you.
It is. Hold on, let me contract.
So if there's no other questions on the bulk of the policies here, I even prepared the motions and they're already prepped in the.
I make a motion to accept for the first reading of the following policies as reviewed: BBA, BBA, AGA, GBE, GBEC, GBI, GBK, GDO, KBA, KBE, KDB, KDB, KEZ, KHJ, KJA, KLG. Second.
Motion to make a second of all those. Any further discussion?
I make a motion that we accept for the first reading of the following revised policies.
Ananous.
JICF, BA, BB, BHC, GBE, A, GCE, GCF, GCIA, GCRD, GDB, KA, KCD, KE, and KI. Do I hear a second?
Is there a second?
I don't know. I was following along. I'll second.
Motion made a second. Sorry. Any comment? You two could.
Don't forget to breathe.
Paul in favor?
I make a motion that we accept for the first reading, the recommendation to rescind the following policies. BAA, BBA slash BBBB, BBBC, BBBE, GBD, GB, GB, GCA, GCB, A, GCBC, GDA, GDF, GDJ, KA dash P, KDCB, KDCB dash P1. Was that nine? It's a one. KDCB dash R, KDF, KEV, KEV dash R.
And GDI, is it on there?
And also amend my motion to include GDI.
Okay. Thank you.
Say a second.
A second.
Paul in favor?
I. Did you say CBGBs? It sounded like you said CBGBs.
CBPJs? A beatbox.
You know, so, you know, I don't want people to get the perception that we're treating this lightly, but I really appreciate the committee taking the time to pre-review the packet before, before this meeting so that we can focus on the right, the right issues.
Darrell, you gave us, you know, the information we needed to make these decisions.
Thank you very much.
The folks can see it in the packet. Just by looking at it, thanks.
Yeah, the summaries in particular were very, very.
Possible.
Matching that. Very, very well done. I do.
Darrell needs to present at the next conference.
How long was it saying that?
Yep.
Okay, so we got them all, eh? What are we going to do tonight?
That's all I wanted to cover tonight.
That's it?
Next meeting's the 21st, which will be tonight. We already discussed it. It'll be starting at 6:00 PM. Let's make sure we advertise that well because we've got seven on this.
Sure.
That's made up.
Yeah, I'll try to get the agenda out here tomorrow.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion, Mike?
Do we need executive session? We adjourn. Motion adjourned. Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, folks.
Good night.
Appreciate it. Long night. Thank you. Kelly, if you would.